Good afternoon, and I want to thank you for coming out to this very, very important hearing. And as you know, this is important to us because whatever is happening to people, especially as it relates to their communities in our respective districts in the city of New York, we felt that we needed to pay attention. And we are happy that you've come out to support us in doing that. I have with me so far two of our colleagues. As you know, this hearing is being co-sponsored by several of the members of the state level, those of us who are chairs of committees or who are directly impacted based on the districts that we represent. And of course, the number one member, who is not to forget, but will be long, is the Chair of the New York State Senate Housing Committee, Senator Robert Haverhill. So we want to thank him also for sponsoring this. And I must say that we would not be here if it were not for our oral president. So would you join the just thanking oral president? I spoke to him the first time on this issue. He said to us, I want to be part of whatever you're doing to address this issue. So he sort of took it as a major concern and a major issue that he intends to continue to work with us in fashioning some, some response to what we hear here today. So that's a testimony of his own worth, and we do appreciate it. He's then come. I want to just point out one hero on, Yolanda, forward, please. Let's give her a hand. We don't know how do you say you propel up to the top. But here is a woman who has been so consistent, and she started out just helping people who have lost their confidence, trying to help people navigate the system that have resulted in problems that they could not solve themselves. She's an attorney, but she did not decide to use her profession just to make money. She decided to become, which is what I consider to be a lot of the causes for us. So she's here today, she's guided a lot of what we have been able to do, what's down, and we anticipate her giving us continued guidance. I just want to acknowledge your work. Thank you so much. I'm going to ask my co-chair of this to sort of give you clues and tell who our members are who are together sponsoring this thing. So you rest assured, we're not here just for speeches. We're here to hear from you, to hear testimony. And the first testimony that you're going to hear is from the Attorney General of the State of New York. So Tish James' office is here, and as you know, she would be herself, but she said she couldn't come, but she has an able representative who is going to start off our testimony. But first, we need to hear who are the members who are involved in this. And the first member that I want to introduce is the Chair of the Black Hispanic Puerto Rican Asian Legislative Caucus of the State of New York, Jervine Wright.
Good afternoon, everyone. I do want to thank our oral president for hosting us today and for also taking it as a charge when he heard of the news of everything that was going on in our communities and realizing that as the head of Brooklyn, as our former president, he wanted to be a very active part in all of this, under our leadership with Senator Montgomery and to all the members of the Senate and Assembly that have participated in bringing this together and competing in this committee so that you can examine what's happening. I would say thank you to, I see a lot of my community members, my local district folks that are here today, ready to give testimony, be a part, I get that person, the number of you in my office. And so I'm very happy to give you this platform to share your narrative with everyone in this city and also to make sure that it becomes a part of your purpose, that you move forward and find solutions to address foreclosure, liens, outstanding, just really egregious fines that people are experiencing and things that are all leading to unstable housing situations and loss of homes, that we're all active parties in this conversation. So thank you very much. And at this time, I guess I will ask one of our members from Harlem, Assemblymember Al Taylor, to give me this.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am honored to be here, and I have a particular interest myself because I live in the HDFC that we're experiencing our foreclosure. And I don't know how many times people try to sell everything, I've been offered, or money has been dangled in front of me. And so it's an easy lift, we're here to hear the testimonies, and I thank the Senator for initiating this, and I certainly want to thank the oral president for making it possible for this to happen. But we're here to hear from each one of you that care to testify, that we can move the needle just a little bit further. So I am glad to be here, and thank you, my colleagues.
So with that, we will begin our testimony. By the way, the oral president is on his way to press event regarding the issue in Australia? New Zealand, excuse me. New Zealand. And so he's on his way immediately following that. So I'm going to ask the first person who will be testifying for us from the Attorney General of the State of New York's office, Michael Abosa, who is the Assistant Attorney General in charge of the Brooklyn Regional Office of the Attorney General. Mr. Abosa, you're welcome.
Good afternoon, Senator Montgomery, Assemblymember Wright. Thank you to oral president Adams and distinguished members. I am very honored to be here on behalf of our Attorney General, Tish James. I serve in the Brooklyn Regional Office where we help residents in Kings County address consumer problems, public advocacy, and particular deed theft and deed fraud in numerous housing matters. Now, as you know, our Attorney General, Tish James, serves as the people's lawyer, serving as the chief guardian. She protects all of our rights, civil rights, consumer rights, defending labor laws, environment, investors, and more. We also defend the state, and we have broad authority under our executive authority, 6312, to subpoena businesses and individuals, which is a pattern of practice of persistent fraud and illegal conduct. We're here today to talk about the Brooklyn housing crisis. After more than 10 years of quarter foreclosure crisis, homeowners in Brooklyn continue to face many problems. Records show that although home prices are going up, homeownership for Black and Latino homeowners are decreasing every year. The rate of foreclosure filings in Brooklyn are still very high, and the epidemic of fraud continues. And many of these homes have been involved, have been by these families, controlled by these families for half a century. Why is this happening? Well, we know why this is happening because the value of the properties have gone up, and owners, many of the owners are elderly or widowed. Properties accumulate liens, as was discussed, and with the stroke of a pen, homes have been transferred from victims for the most vulnerable. To combat this problem, the Attorney General's office has done a number of initiatives in addition to our litigation, which I'll discuss briefly. But in 2012, we had a homeowner protection program, HOP, which provides free legal services and a network of over 85 counseling legal service organizations across the state to try to directly help homeowners in foreclosure as well as funds for resources. We also created a website that where homeowners can look up different organizations to see if there's a reputable business or company, to see if they've been under investigation by the Attorney General's office, by another government agency. We also have a foreclosure rescue scam prevention, where we provide grants. The New York State Mortgage Assistance Program provides 0% interest rate for families that are in distress, that need assistance to help them with their modifications. So, I have three more minutes? Yes, okay. All right. So just talking about some of the deed theft. We've done many cases. Most recent was a deed theft involving a woman who was charged with transferring and forging the properties of two properties in Brownsville, Brooklyn, East Flatbush. Most of these cases involve individuals who were either very elderly or died and forged documents. And now, we're working more and more with all the different departments, all the sheriff's offices, and we're doing a number of different civil deed theft fraud cases as well. Our recommendations are to continue to contact our office. We have a 1-800 number, 1-800-771-7755. We also have our website and try to strengthen some of the different protections that protect homeowners. There was a Home Equity Theft Prevention Act from 2006 that needs to be in line with the new scams that are coming in place in terms of strengthening the different protections for homeowners, in terms of allowing the district attorney to void the contract instead of having homeowners go to civil court and hire an attorney, and numerous other changes. So we stand here with all of our advocates, and I look forward to any questions. Thank you.
Could you quickly give us that hotline number again, and if that's regarding deed theft issues that goes directly to you?
Yes, the 1-800 number is 1-800-771-7755.
And that's anyone who was having issues regarding deed theft?
That's all of our consumer fraud related cases, and the deed theft goes directly to the Brooklyn Regional Office, or it also goes to our real estate enforcement unit that handles the criminal law related matters.
Thank you.
Okay, can you also, let's revisit the, I think we just spoke of proposal two, allow DA to void contracts. Can you just reiterate once again about some of that?
Sure, absolutely. So under, there's a current bill.
1408?
Okay.
That's 1408?
Yes, 1408. And there's a section that's looking to amend the criminal procedure law that would allow the district attorney or Attorney General to be able to make a motion in Supreme Court and void it when we show proof that there's a conviction underlying with the deed.
Okay.
For the transfer of sale, yes.
Thank you.
Doro.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
While we do not have in person our district attorney, DA of Zollis, he has sent in a written testimony. So as soon as we have a moment to go over that ourselves, we can share some of what he is saying to you. Meanwhile, our next presenter is Attorney Yolanda Nicholson, who is going to get started on what she's been doing. Please, Yolanda, make sure that we have some recommendations coming from you, because the ultimate, the ultimate purpose of this hearing is that we hope to have some recommendations for us to take with us in terms of legislative remedies to address some of these.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I just want to take a second before my time starts to run to extend my gratitude and the community's gratitude to Senator Montgomery, to Assemblymember Jervine Wright, and to Assemblymember Al Taylor. Senator Montgomery and colleagues have really made foreclosure and saving homeownership and addressing or assessing the crisis, the priority of their agenda for this session, and I'm certain that members of the community will be most grateful. With that, I'm going to start. My, the Senator has graciously asked me to set stage, so I may go over the time. There were different things happening in our community. We've been dealing with bank foreclosures for over 10 years, which is, which is causing, or which are causing a huge loss. Recently, we have learned and have had to deal with city foreclosures under the TPT program, the third-party transfer program, so there will be some testimony about that. And there are, I'm learning now recently that there are, there's a program called the TAIL program where property owners or shareholders have been waiting to be converted, and that presents its own problem. So with that, I'm going to begin, and please forgive me for the length of my testimony to sort of set a framework for you. As I stated, my name is Yolanda Nicholson. I've been practicing in the area of foreclosure defense and prevention since 2010. I appreciate this opportunity to testify on the crisis and epidemic facing our communities. I've now begun to call this an epidemic. I would like to inform you that yesterday, on March 14th, 2014, my mother's birthday, 64 properties in Brooklyn, New York were scheduled for auction in Kings County Supreme Court. I've included the listing of these properties in your packages. The list tells the story of your neighbors who are no longer able to live alongside you, or to send their children and grandchildren to local schools or to churches in the neighborhoods where they previously lived and where you represent. However, the list does not tell the stories of the families, children, and seniors who have lived in or are part of the legacy of the property's auction, or who are ushered to an elusive investor with a deed or equity theft transaction or by a deed and loan. What we may never know is the number of families who have been able to remain in their homes if the courts were not making a mockery of the protections adopted by the legislature to save homeownership whenever there's a possibility for a loan modification or reinstatement of mortgage payments. What we may never know is whether or not the pleadings and affidavits on which the plaintiff's secured foreclosure judgments were granted to the auction are fraudulent or without credible basis. What is public knowledge is that Black and Brown communities in New York City, in neighborhoods like Bed-Stuy, Canarsie, Brooklyn, St. Albans, Queens, Harlem, Upper Manhattan, once red line, were then targeted for subprime and predatory lending and are today's hot vets for gentrification. Your longtime neighbors and friends are being replaced with cash rich investors, many of whom trade foreclosure judgments and auctions behind the scenes. They then drive up the poor square foot cost of rentals and the purchase price of homes for one time, for first time buyers in the outer boroughs of the city. Foreclosure judgments and auctions are thus part of the engine for displacement of people of color from their homes and their communities of many decades. This is the message that I'm hoping that you leave here with, that our courts have become the fuel of the displacement of our people. I have, I am here to report to you is that overall, we no longer have a state court system that cares to inquire about or have evidence regarding which entity actually owns the mortgage note, or which entity actually events money to fund the loan. The courts now care less about whether or not the actual creditor is before them in loan modification negotiations, or whether the entity representing judgment and auction in foreclosure proceedings has legal standing, or whether the foreclosure auction is being published, telling why, all of which are required by law. The well-kept secret is that foreclosure judgments are being doled out by our state Supreme Courts across the state and in Kings County especially, to any wrong body claiming to own the loan while presenting a photocopy of the note, oftentimes a poor photocopy. Consequently, the foreclosure crisis has now steadily risen the epidemic limits for the communities of color. And in the rest of my testimony, there's information about why. Recently, we learned that in New York State, 167,000 pre-foreclosure notices were sent out in 2017. The courts are reporting and celebrating a downward trend in foreclosure proceedings and a downward trend in foreclosure, and the market is celebrating a downward trend in foreclosure filings. But I don't think our communities can join in this celebration because we don't feel a downward trend, we feel a pressure. The clients that I speak to, some of whom are here, some of whom are referred to me by the Senator's office, by community leaders, by the precinct council, by community boards, every day I hear there's a heavy, heavy pressure. When we go to court, it's difficult to get a loan modification even for families that can afford. And I want to leave you with a couple case studies, but to impress that although we're talking about communities of color, we're talking about working family communities, median income family communities, our home communities live, we are diverse community. We have clients who are Orthodox Jew, Jewish families, Italian-American families, Hispanic-American families, Middle Eastern families, and there's just this, with all the respect to the AG's office, the values that we're seeing in Brooklyn are not merely because of market pressure. We have a spinup that's been removed from the court where we no longer care about fraud in filings, we no longer care about rational basis for denying loan modifications because the people predominantly facing foreclosure right now look like me and you. So with that, we also have a court system that I believe has been a little compromised, maybe on win win. And as such, one of the solutions in terms of solutions is that we are asking for a moratorium on foreclosure proceedings, all of them. So that there can be an investigation as to why an amazing seminal landmark body of laws that the New York State Legislature put in in 2009 to save homeownership is not working. We're also asking for, and I, there are certain decisions that are now being made by the appellate court that appear to do an emrah around the evidentiary.
...practice law and rule, starting primarily with the question of whether the legal owner of the loan is in front of the court, is in the court, has the right to foreclose. So we're going to ask the legislature to tighten up that law because the courts have said, especially for pro se litigants, that they waive that right to request or ask or demand that if they wait too long to put their hand up and understand what an answer is. So those are the primary things, and out of the moratorium, the moratorium is to investigate what's going on, and we will figure out other solutions. But I just want to share with you, before I, the case study, she was supposed to be here, so I'm actually using up her time, of Ms. Tekla Mohansing, to illustrate the challenges facing homeowners in foreclosure proceedings. I also have with me here Mr. Joseph Redhead, who has been trying to get a modification for a long time, just retired justice spinner, he's going to talk a little bit about some more solutions, and then we would move to the TPT program. On Monday, some of my colleagues and I filed a complaint in the Southern District, naming the city as the defendant, asking the federal court to declare the law under which the city is seizing properties for third party's transfer, transfer to be invalid. It is invalid. And to stop this bend of saying we're doing affordable housing, but our people can't really afford to live in affordable housing. So first, I'm going to read you Ms. Mohansing's testimony. She actually is in bed after recovering from stress from trying to save her home, and she was hospitalized last week and really regrets that she couldn't be here. Ms. Mohansing migrated to Brooklyn with her mother at 14 years old from Trinidad and Tobago. She attended high school in Brooklyn and then Cuny Queens College. Ms. Mohansing's fiance died when her son was an infant. She later lost her mother unexpectedly in 2010. At the same time, Ms. Mohansing's subprime mortgage loan adjusted and her monthly payments became unaffordable since her household income was reduced significantly. Her mother was a New York State registered nurse. In 2010, Ms. Mohansing endeavored to get a loan modification using the resources made available to borrowers by the federal government. She also shared with her mortgage service company that her deceased mother had left a college fund for her young son, which she was willing to apply to her payments to keep the loan current while she was applying for a loan modification. Tellingly, no loan modification was offered in 2010. Ms. Mohansing was referred to me in late 2010 when a servicing company threatened to foreclose. A foreclosure action was commenced in 2011 by Aurora Loan Services, which then became Nationstar and is now known as Mr. Cooper. I embarked on the process with her to secure a loan modification in the foreclosure settlement part of the Supreme Court, as is her right on the CPLR and for which she qualified. However, nothing shy of brinksmanship and gamesmanship ensued by the attorneys representing Aurora and then Nationstar until the matter was briefed for a ruling on the foreclosing plaintiff and its agents' lack of good faith in loan modification review and discussions. In early 2016, her case was taken away from the assigned judge who presided over these proceedings and to whom papers were submitted in support of her request for the court to exert its authority to determine whether the plaintiffs had acted with bad faith and whether interest should be told as a result. Ms. Mohansing qualified all along for a HAMP, every step of the way. She works for the Girl Scouts, she's been working there for 18 years, and she should have given a modification. Following the time that rocket docket proceedings, which I've explained in my paper, were implemented, the case was reassigned to a special foreclosure part, and then it lingered in what's called the shadow docket of the court. The bad faith hearing was never held. All these years since 2010, this interest has been mounting. I then referred her to my sister Alice Nicholson, who tried to get a loan modification in federal court. Wells Fargo came in and did more shenanigans and said that they came up with some denial that they've got an in-house one mod, HAMP's gone, and really they don't have to modify. So this is really the story of how the courts are failing our families despite the fact that the legislature has mandated the courts to create an arena for good faith negotiations. So having said that, Alice just spit, well, maybe Mr. Redhead, do you want to just share your story?
All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Redhead. I'm a construction worker. I walk on the Triborough Bridge, walk on the Tampanzee, and right about now, I'm on the cackeyasco. I've been doing construction all my life. Now I'm going to give you a story about my situation with my house. My house was built in 2004. I bought it in 2005. I get a loan from Lend America. In about a year and a half, I did a refinance with Fremont Investment. So what they did, they asked me for, need any cash back. So I said to them, if there's enough equity in the house to give me some cash, I'll take it. So what they did nowadays, they loaned me $100,000 and put it on top of the loan, and there, the loan become more than the value of the property. And they gave me, they gave me a check for $37,000. So then, actually, they sold the loan to... So then, actually, they sold the loan to America Servicing Company. So they be, here now.
Is testimony is going to be in the record?
Okay. Okay. I'll try to make it shorter.
Talk about what happened with your efforts to get a loan modification.
Well, actually, I tried many times, you know, trying to get a loan modification, and somehow, it just not working out. So I don't know why the banks are find, you know, find it so difficult to give one a second chance. Well, actually, I have a wife, and I have three kids, my daughter, and I got two boys, they're twins, and all three of them is in college. So it's pretty hard. But for the past three, four years, I've been working steady. I'm a union carpenter, but somehow, things just not working out for me. So it's pretty hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Enduke here? Okay, sorry. First, I'm going to, I'm going to divert, Enduke Agu, am I stating correctly? He is the deputy director of Brooklyn A Legal Services, and I've asked him to just share with the legislature and the senator and the assembly members his experience in trying to get loan modifications for families.
I feel like I'm too tall. My name is Enduke Agu. I'm the deputy director of the Consumer Economic Advocacy Program at Brooklyn Legal Services Corporation A. My primary function is to help homeowners in foreclosure to save their homes, in addition to assisting homeowners through various loss mitigation procedures, and Ms. Nicholson spoke about what's happening in the courts. My office litigates where needed to accomplish this. I wanted to supplement Ms. Nicholson's testimony before this panel by talking very briefly about loss mitigation and its various guises in both state and federal court, and why this is necessary to combat the ever-evolving banking criteria for approving loan modifications. Additionally, I do not seek to mimic a lot of what's going to be spoken about today. So today, New York CPLR 3408 requires mandatory settlement conferences to be held as a formal loss mitigation process for all residential foreclosure actions of owner-occupied homes. With expiration of the federal Home Affordable Modification Program, which was called HAMP in December of 2016, struggling borrowers have had to turn to standard in-house modifications for relief for financial hardships. In-house modifications have been a staple of American banking since well before HAMP. A primary benefit of HAMP, however, was the standardization it provided to lenders throughout the industry. Before HAMP, loan modification processing procedures varied with each institution, and applicants had little room for review of a private denial outside of the legal safeguards built into New York State's foreclosure legislation. HAMP's expiration, however, has not brought a corresponding decrease in financial hardships. In fact, HAMP's expiration has increased the hardships facing home borrowers who previously defaulted since interest owed continued to accrue in a climate where there's no federal state programs or law to encourage loan modifications. The question then remains as to whether a return to in-house modifications will result in an increase in arbitrary denials and roadblocks for struggling New Yorkers, New York borrowers. My answer to that question is yes. With HAMP gone, I've seen banks, investors, private equity firms, and the like revert them back to creating in-house criterias and formulas that make it harder and harder to qualify for affordable modifications. These new formulas or criterias are capricious and arbitrary and create automatic scenarios that fail. I'm going to continue. For such things like net present value, and I'm going to talk about that very briefly. What is difficult about this is that banks and various investors do not explain the formula they use to come to these arbitrary conclusions and claim them to be proprietary, and it's something that Alice Nicholson had when she brought it to bankruptcy court, and something that I've seen. Despite CPLR 3408 has allowed us in state court to still hold the banks accountable and maintain an environment where modifications are still obtainable, albeit with more pitfalls, in both Brooklyn and Queens, various legal services organizations, Brooklyn Legal Services Corp. A included, have been fortunate to be allowed by some judges and referees to step into the courtrooms and conference rooms as friends of the court and offer additional help and protections to homeowners. Additionally, the federal bankruptcy courts in Eastern and Southern District, which covers Brooklyn, have adopted loss mitigation procedures to address the continuing foreclosure crisis. I want to make it clear that with the exception of FHA loans, there is no longer any legal standard for judges in state and federal court to require national or local banks, hedge funds, servicers, investors, or the like to submit a coherent or credible basis for denials. I recently represented a homeowner where Wells Fargo, this could be a common theme, I guess, denied him because they indicated that even though his income made the loan affordable, so the payments were affordable based on his income, he was denied because of net present value. Essentially, his debt-to-income ratio was too high, and they were better off foreclosing on his home. I'm still litigating this case. Regardless of these, all these protective procedures that have been put in place, it is getting harder to get around the ever-evolving rules and restrictions being created by banks, investors, private equity firms, and the like to deny homeowners an affordable modification or similarly doable loss mitigation alternative. We are also fortunate that many in our judiciary, both in state and federal court, still hold the banks accountable for unscrupulous unfair practices. Thank you for your time.
I just wanted to ask a quick question about a couple of issues that you've raised. One is the moratorium. Now, we did a letter, and I think about 20 of us signed on. It was a sign-on letter, elected officials, asking for a moratorium on, I think, the TTP program specifically. And we wrote to the mayor, and we wrote to all of the leaders everywhere, everybody that we could think of, and we got basically no response. So clearly, what we did at that point, asking for a moratorium, did not work. So I'm just sort of wondering if we need to do something more than that, and if so, what would that be? That's one question. The other question is, I'm looking in the information that you gave out, and you talk about, and you gave us a map of the foreclosure notice time. So my question is, there are some areas where people receive over 100 days notice. There are other places in the borough, in the city, I guess, but especially in my district and districts that we represent, they receive far fewer days in terms of a pre-foreclosure notice. Is there a role for us in terms of legislation with regards to notice? And if so, what would that be? And if, I don't have to have an immediate answer, but that would be one of the areas that I would be very interested in learning about.
I will follow up in more detail with your office and with you about this, with respect to the second question, and then I'd like to turn to Judge Spinner, because he will actually lay out the recommendations legislatively that we're looking at. But your second question is very, very key for saving homes. The 90-day pre-foreclosure notice that was passed in 2008 was intended to do two things. Before someone gets into foreclosure, for that borrower to work with that lender to try to figure out how they can modify their loans. The banks just use it now as perfunctory, they just, you know, they serve, they claim they serve it, and so there might be some things there to look into. We haven't seen instances, well, we've seen a lot of instances where they claim in court that they've served the notices, but there's no evidence that they've served the notice. The second important thing is that the courts have taken the position that the lack of serving the notice is not jurisdictional. So what, we're getting cases dismissed for failure to serve the notice, and then the cases just are coming back, three, four times, five times, six times. Or if a borrower is pro se, and they somehow went to conferences, but they didn't put in an answer, they waived that right along the way to challenge the notice. So those are going to be some of the recommendations. And with respect to your first question, I think I'm going to turn to Judge Spinner and give more detail after.
And by the way, just so that you know, that we, each of our houses, the Assembly and the Senate, each of us have put out in response to the governor's budget proposal, our own proposals. We call them resolutions. So in our resolution, in the Senate, we have requested the $20 million for the homeowners' protection program, HAP, which was brought to our attention, by the way, by many of the people in this room, and so we are going to be fighting for that as elected representatives to make sure that this does happen.
And in the Assembly One House, we have a appropriation for, a request for $20 million for the coalition of small community-based groups as well as legal services that provide direct service to those who are facing foreclosure and need assistance to, in the process for Judge, thank you very much for coming. By the way, Judge testified in Albany during the Black and Puerto Rican Caucus, so we thank you very much for your help.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. How's everybody today? Good. Senator Montgomery, Assembly Member. I can read my own handwriting. Assembly Member Taylor.
Assembly Member Tremaine.
I can't read my own writing, it's terrible. Assembly Member Tremaine, President Adams. Thank you all for allowing me to appear here today and try and help out. I did have the privilege of appearing before Senator Montgomery and Assembly Member Taylor in Albany a few weeks ago, and I think that's how we sort of got the ball rolling. My name is Jeffrey Arland Spinner. I'm sure most people here don't know me. I was an attorney in private practice for 10 years, and I was a judge in Suffolk County, county court judge for 21 years, the last 13 years as an acting Supreme Court justice. I had a particular interest in the field of foreclosure. I did that when I was in private practice. And when our legislature created a statute known as CPLR 3408, which requires a settlement conference with the court on a residential foreclosure, I was the person who was assigned to create the program in Suffolk, to set it up, to staff it, to come up with rules, to come up with parameters. The way I always did my world was, I would want people to come in with an even playing field. If you have a single homeowner and you have a large bank, obviously, you have a disparity in terms of power, in terms of influence, in terms of money. I personally conferenced every single case for almost two years, because that's the way it had to be. I made some decisions that were, I would venture to say, somewhat unpopular in banking circles, but I did what I had to do. I think one of the best things that our Assembly and Senate have done was to pass Section 3408, because it gave people the ability to actually come in and be heard. They're not going in and trying to talk to somebody on the phone at Mr. Cooper or Nationstar and say, hey, can you help me out? They come in, they can have a lawyer assigned to them, they go before a judge, and it can make a difference. There is one thing that I think is lacking in Section 3408, which I think must be addressed, and that's that it's what I call a toothless tiger. It's a wonderful statute. It requires the parties to negotiate in what's called good faith to reach some sort of a resolution. The statute doesn't really define good faith. That has evolved through a series of judicial decisions, including some that I have written. What it does not provide for are specific sanctions, what to do if it turns out one of the parties is not negotiating in good faith. I had one of those cases, and what I did was I created what's called an abatement, an abatement of interest, of court costs during a specific period of time. I directed that the bank was prohibited from collecting interest or costs in this specific window of time where they failed to act in good faith.
Excuse me, Judge. Judge, we're going to need, we want to make sure we get as many people as possible, so just, can you summarize on your main point? And I just want to bring to attention to everyone who's here that we have the clock there, because it's always important to me that we hear from everyone. So let's try to be mindful of the clock, and this way, we can get all of our community members together. So Judge, I need for you to summarize.
Okay.
You can give us a written statement that we will put into the package.
Yes, I've already provided that.
Okay.
So basically, I think that 3408 needs teeth. I think that, as Ms. Nicholson pointed out, to require filing of proof of service of the 1304 notices is critical. I also support the recommendation of some sort of a moratorium on foreclosure proceedings. Let's do that. Take a look into it, see what's really going on. But I think if, I think if they can also, I have it in my, in my written statement, that the issue of standing, which is the ability of a party to actually come into court and assert their rights, that's not something that should be waivable. That's something that should be able to be raised at any time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Spinner. Now that we've, that we've heard from our Borough President, thank you very much. Yolan, are you?
I was going to switch to TPT whenever you're ready.
Okay, so let's do, let's do this first, please, housekeeping. I just want to, as we, we've already thanked him, so he doesn't really need us to thank him again. I think, but we will say, while he's present, we really, really appreciate you opening up our house so that we could come in and be able to discuss these important issues and questions. But, you know, not every borough has the kind of Borough President that we have here in Brooklyn. So, yeah, we know this is, that this is the county of kings, so we have a wonderful leader for our borough. I also want to recognize Senator Kevin Parker, who is also a member, and he is Chair of the Committee on Energy and Technology. And, yes, so, and he absolutely demanded that we include him in this, although we didn't really know what he would say, but he has, he has assured us that he has a very important role to play in this whole question, and I'm so happy that he is here with us and will give us some, some understanding of how he intends to work with us to take care of this issue. Our Borough President?
Yes, if I could just.
Adams.
Just a few statements. Thank you. Senator Montgomery, during my time in Albany, has really been the voice of just morale and reasoning, and we just really thank her for her years of service. And both with Senator Parker and Senator Wright, and we're so happy to have Senator Taylor here with us at the same time. And I just want to set the tone of why we think this hearing is so important, and this is just one of many stops. We cannot make the mistake of Hilton Head, South Carolina, where so many black property owners lost their home, the thousands of black farm owners lost their property. There's something that is afoot that's taking place across America, and I think Brooklyn is ground zero, and the... And the, the river, the rivers that are leading to the ocean of black homeownership is coming in from so many different directions. We have foreclosures, we have the deed frauds that's taking place, we have the property transfer taxes taking place. There's a, there's a concerted effort across this city where black and brown people are losing their homes. And our wealth is really in our homeownership. Once you lose that wealth, we lose our homeownership. When you have a homeowner that loses a million-dollar home because of $3,000, or if you, even if they lose their home for $100,000, your family's losing your equity, and you're, you're losing your wealth. You cannot turn that wealth over to your family members, your sons and your daughters. And so this is not just about numbers and stats. If we, if we want to go after those large building owners who are not taking care of their buildings, of 400 and 500 apartments, I'm with it. But if you, if you're talking about taking two and three family homes because of water bills or taxes, you can get that after they sell the place. You can always get that money and recoup it. So we need to be clear, and that's why we're here, because all of our offices have been hearing the same thing over and over again. And it is imperative that we create a document. We sent a letter to the U.S. Attorney. I believe there's some criminality that's involved in some of the things that are taking place. And we need a thorough forensic audit of every house that was lost, and what is the dollar amount that's involved. We need to also put a moratorium. We need to stop foreclosures, we need to stop transferring the properties, we need to stop what we're doing until we figure out what is being done. That's what we need to do. And so, I, I want to conclude by saying, listen, I have a home, I'm a homeowner in Bed-Stuy, and I, I worked hard for it, and I want to turn it over to my son. And many of you have homes that you have sweated. When no one wanted to be in Brooklyn, you stood fast. I remember Annette Robinson, a former Assemblywoman, talking about only your home. And I'll be darned if we're going to allow people to come in and just take those homes from you. That's not going to happen. And that's why we're having this hearing, that's why we're here today, because we're going to fight for your homes and give it everything we got to protect them, and that's why we're having this hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Borough President Adams. And I want to acknowledge our former Assemblywoman, but forever, our current leader, Assemblywoman Annette Robinson. She is here with us as well. So, one of the builders of Bed-Stuy. And I believe that Edlyn Jacquet, Jacquette, who is here representing Senator Myrie, is here, is the Chief of Staff for Senator Myrie. It's a she, I'm sorry, Edlyn, Edlyn? Okay. Mara Roca, Roca, CB7, Community Board Seven, where is, okay, all right. Celeste Morris, where's, oh, there she is. Okay, thank you. CB7, one of the community boards in our district. Where is Maria? No, she's in the back, she just stood up. Celeste, where is Celeste? Oh, thank you. Thank you, Celeste. Celeste is one of the soldiers in our army forever. Gabrielle Torres is the Legislative Director for Assemblyman Walter Mosley. There he's there, thank you for, for coming here and representing our Assemblyman. And Karen Hee, where is Karen? Oh, thank you, Karen. Karen is representing the Comptroller of the State of New York, Comptroller Denapoli. Thank you for coming. I wanted to, I know that the, the Borough President has really set us, set up, set us in motion, and I really appreciate that. But I, also, one of my colleagues, Senator Parker, has a response to some of the things that he's heard this morning, and I wanted him to respond to that.
Good afternoon.
Hold it close.
Okay. Yeah, there you go. All right. Good afternoon. Let me add my voice to those thanking Borough President Adams for opening up the People's House and allowing us to hold this important public hearing, and couldn't be happier to be joining my colleagues in government to talk about this issue that's important. Some of you know, I represent the 21st District in Brooklyn, which is part of Canarsie and part of Flatlands, but principally Flatbush and East Flatbush, Midwood, Tidmouth Park, Windsor Terrace, and Park Slope. I see a number of my constituents in the audience. We have a very large homeowner community, much like Bed-Stuy, which is represented here, much like Harlem that is represented here. And exactly what you heard the Borough President say, I want to associate myself with his comments. One of the things that's important, as my role as the Chair of the Energy and Telecommunications Committee, is that we oversee the PSC, all right? That's the Public Service Commission, which oversees things like water rates, electric rates, utility rates. And so there's a conversation that needs to be had with the PSC and those folks around this issue as well. Also have been working with organizations like Pulp, the Public Utility Law Project, which is a nonprofit law firm that has been addressing these cases with Con Ed key span, and also many of the water boards around the state. But there's a real legislative role here that I think that we're going to have to figure out. You heard Senator Montgomery refer to a letter that was written that called for a moratorium. We're going to be moving once, you know, towards the end of this, to try to get the language from that letter into the state budget, so that we actually call, create a moratorium in the state budget for the state of New York in, in terms of foreclosure. So that's going to be the first, the first step, and we'll create some bill language as well, to make that happen. And so we hope that we will, by April 1st, get that lined up and, and get that legislation moving in the context of our state budget. And we think that that is the, the best and most effective way to move at that time, in addition to the other notes that we're taking around the legislative fixes that we're hearing from the experts today. So I just want to thank everybody for their time and their energy for being here. And I also want to announce one of my colleagues who just joined us and is actually the Chair of the Senate Housing Committee from Brooklyn to Manhattan, Brian Kavanaugh.
Well, welcome, Senator. While, while he is getting settled, we'll hear from our next speaker, our next testimonial, and then, can we, we, can, we're still on homeownership.
We're going to TPT.
So can you come back in a little bit?
Say that, sorry?
After John. Can you come back?
Yes, is John here?
Dr. John Flacco.
He said he might be late because, yeah, he said he might be late. I just wanted to, I was, I was, just to extend my personal greetings to the Borough President. Thank you again for hosting this and taking the lead, and to Senator Kevin Parker, who's constantly reaching out and offering his offices help and resources to address this problem. We just want to, in the interest of time, we're going to move quickly. Last fall, Mr. James Caldwell, President of the 77 Precinct Community Council, called me with the family that the Borough President indicated lost their home for approximately $3,000 water bill. To move quickly, we've now, months later, understand what was gravely wrong with this process. And on Monday, we filed a complaint in federal court, asking the federal, the Southern District to look into the law, the New York City local law for TPT, and to also look into the validity of it. We believe that New York City has usurped the authority and the, given to them by the state legislature to collect taxes. So that will move along. But in the interest of, in the interest of time, we had two TPT families to speak, but Mr. Burrows, if you don't mind, Mr. Burrows has a, Ms. Burrows is in Mr. Taylor, Assemblyman Taylor's district. Their building did a really wonderful video that shows the lack of success for TPT. That video will be part of the record and will be uploaded in the interest of time. I think we're going to just do, if you don't mind, do you mind? We just do one person, unless they would, it's up to the panel. But Ms., Ms. Murchison?
Yeah, we have several other.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Beyond my power.
Five, so, so I was thinking we should just, it's a really, I think we could just have those things uploaded and move to the other things. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, hold on, brother, you, did you sign up? You sign up, you speak individually, you're not speaking, when, her time is not your time, you speak on your own. Did you sign up to speak?
We, I submitted their names, both their names, so I'm, I'm, I'm done. I'm, thank you for the opportunity, for bringing this to your attention, for the resources and time you've given to it, and for your commitment to try to do something to make a difference.
So, so, so you speak individually?
Mr. Burrow, I guess.
After this young lady, after this young lady, I set the mic, okay? You're welcome.
I had, yes, my name is Shalivia Thomas Murchison, and I had a whole statement prepared, but I just want to start off by saying, I want to thank you guys up here for giving us a chance to speak to you, to speak on behalf of our families and on generational wealth and on our children, our great-grandchildren that we have been stolen from. If I had to say anything directly, I just want to say that we have been targeted as black and brown people in our communities, just trying to feed our families and take care of our families. But what I want to say is because we were targeted, this is what we would call a hate crime. Okay? This is a hate crime. If I, if I could one minute, because my clock is running, hate crime defined, the FBI defines a hate crime as a crime against a person or property motivated by bias towards race, religion, ethnicity, national origin, disability, or sexual orientation. When we talk about TPT in the black and brown communities, we're talking about us. In the same way that they have violated other people, speaking mainly of the Jews, and now currently the Muslim community has been under attack, this is how we have been attacked. So I want you guys to understand how important that is. But if I had to say anything prepared, is the third-party transfer program, TPT, has affected my family in ways I do not feel comfortable at this time discussing. But what I can tell you for certainly is that my family has lost real property, personal property, and future earning assets that exceeds over the value of $2 million. The TPT program itself is based on the current market value, and because of that, if you take into account the debt in which they're saying we owe, we have definitely been treated and cheated and targeted. I would further like for you guys to understand, this one thing I would like to put forward to you. If I had any recommendations, this would be my recommendation. I have more than enough reason to believe there has been an enormous betrayal of public trust, abuse of power, and ethics violations by elected officials, community-based nonprofit organization, community development corporations, for-profit developers, judges seated on a New York State Supreme Court bench, as well as local clergy of prominent churches in our community. I would further urge you to investigate at the aforementioned nonprofit organization, the elected officials, for misappropriation and corruption. I have and will furnish upon request detailed chronology and documents that may more than support all the claims that I set forth in my statement today. I just want to let you guys know on a personal level, excuse me, my parents and the parents of my daughter, but according to TPT, I was given an injunction and a gag order. Right now, I am breaking the law talking to you, because there's a gag order port on me that I could not speak about what was happening to me. I was made homeless and have been living in my car for over a year with my daughter and this child here. So I appreciate you guys giving me an opportunity to bathe in your bathrooms and be able to approach you as a woman that I am. Thank you, I appreciate you, President, from the bottom of my heart. And I hope this is not lip service, because I'm still in these streets, okay? I'm still in these streets. Thank you, Attorney Nicholson, for believing in us and for standing up for us with the education that a lot of us did not have. I appreciate you for using that and your, and your powers for good. I appreciate the Attorney General as well. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you.
Anything, anything.
I just wanted to ask, are you saying that there are terms with the TPT, did you enter into a settlement agreement with them, which placed a gag order on you, or is that just the terms of the process? Is that just standard in the process?
To answer your question, there was never any notice at all to my HDFC that we were even in a foreclosure, until the contractors went into my mother, broke into my mother's apartment and removed her whole estate. That was when we found out in 2016 that there was a foreclosure done on us five years earlier in 2011. As far as your question as to, was that a part of the agreement, I would never, ma'am, I would never in my life agree to take my voice away, my First Amendment right to speak. I would never give that to anybody for no amount of dollar and for no type of property. That was done as an injunction by Broad Street Development, because I asserted my right as a owner, and they put an injunction on me to remove me from the premises. I am no longer allowed to speak to my own sisters, I am no longer allowed to speak to my own family members that reside in the building. My cousins and my nieces see me on the street, and they speak to me on the street because they're not allowed to talk to me in the building. I would have never agreed to that, ma'am, just to answer your question.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. God bless. Okay.
Hold on, come on, sister, 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 come on, we want to, we want to do this so we get the information. Let this gentleman speak.
I'm sorry.
It's all right, let me pull mine out from under here.
Let me just say that we, we really, this, as the Borough President has made very clear, we're trying to get as much as we can some direction. So, so this is really not for us to just hear the stories. We want to talk about the solutions today. That is the purpose, and so if you can stick to that, be quick, and, because we have to be out by 5:00, but we do want to hear what the people who've been suffering this, who've been working on it, the, there are legal people here. Judge Staton is here, is Judge Betty Staton anywhere here? I know she's been talking to me, she was the one who actually said, we must get that $20 million back in the budget, which is what we've, Judge Staton, we have it in our budget, our resolution, you should know, just want to report to her. So, please, go ahead, and if you can stay within the timeframe, we would appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to just say thanks to Borough President Eric Adams. I'm from Al Taylor's district, 71st Assembly District in, in Harlem. Our building is a current participant in third-party transfer, and as Mr. Taylor alluded to earlier, we've been through and currently in the foreclosure process, proceeding, actually. It is in my opinion that the entire process is illegal, because everything about what took place to get us into the third-party transfer is illegal. All the steps taken were illegal. So here's my story, but as far as the solution, as I stated in Albany, I think on the 16th, we've currently written three bills that we'd like to have sponsored by you guys to submit as it relates to Article 15 and Article 11 of the Private Housing Finance Law, where HPD doesn't really have the right to do any of the things that they're doing, and we've defined that in the bill that we are going to present to you for sponsorship. So, thank you for doing what you did in Albany. So, I, I'd like to also thank Borough President Adams for responding to my email and allowing me to talk to Ryan about what took place in our building, so thank you for that speedy response. But HPD is a criminal organization. My name is Carlton Burrows, please take a look, well, the video is not going to be shown. The TPT program is an utter failure. Residents are deceived into thinking that they are getting a good deal because of the low purchase price, now being offered to have them walk away from their cooperative apartments that were initially offered for long-term stable residency. In addition to the resident shareholders are unlikely to be in a positive equity position, since millions of dollars in construction mortgage loans were made against the building for rehabilitation that was never done, but which has resulted in a pending foreclosure action against the building and our HDFC. action against the building and our HDFC. The TPT program is labeled as a limited equity program. The TPT program should be labeled as a no equity program. The regulatory agreement violates the U.S. Constitution and the New York State Constitution. Maintenance along with annual, with an annual 2% increase will ultimately, we will ultimately be priced out of our homes. This programs, this program robs us of our economic prosperity. Look at the apartment size and the market value, after 30 to 40 years, residents would have paid $900,000 to $1,250,000 in maintenance fees per apartment. The TPT program is designed to fail, and that's exactly what it's doing. The TPT program is tainted with fraud.
Well, I need you, I need you to sum up, okay? Sum up, come to your main thought process.
Well, one of the, the highlights of our situation is, they did all of this work, and they willfully and purposely misfiled the job as to represent non-compliance with the law. They have violated the, the multiple dwelling law, they have violated banking laws, they have violated SEC laws, but yet, we're in court on an illegal foreclosure proceeding. So I'm asking, I'm here today to ask that all the officials here extend a letter to the Department of Justice, and I know Borough President already has, but I think there needs to be a barrage of letters, as many as possible, so that we can get some attention into this criminal organization known as HPD. Thank you.
Brother, how many, how many units, how many units of housing, I mean apartments in your building?
Fifty-one units.
And is it, is it, was it currently, is it a, been stabilized, what is the, what type of?
Well, we're supposed to be a cooperative, a HDFC cooperative, but based on my research, all the, the legal documents that I've read, we're not really any of that, because all the documents are fraudulent.
And, and, and how did they start getting involved in your building in the first place? What happened that started?
We, we were invited to participate in the third-party transfer, say, maybe 2000, 2001. Thank you.
Ms. Sarah Ludwig, founder and co-director of the New Economy Project. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I had come, ready to share some maps of Brooklyn and New York City, and so, since we don't have the ability to show them, can we all imagine together some things? It's, the maps show what we already know, but I want to make a few points about them. So my name is Sarah Ludwig, I'm the founder and co-director of New Economy Project, which was started in 1995, and works with community groups to promote racial and economic justice and community-based, community-led economic development. Our understanding of the world is that the system that we have does not work for, by the lion's share, most people, and that we need to fundamentally transform our economy and our communities and our structures in order to attain any degree of justice. So I'm going to talk today about some mapping analysis we've done, talking about bank redlining, I want to talk about the foreclosure crisis, which is in the present tense, I want to talk about solutions, and I want to thank members of the Assembly, the senators here, and the Borough President so much, Senator Parker, you're my senator. The organization that I work at, New Economy Project, is citywide, and we have, since the mid-'90s, been working with people in central Brooklyn neighborhoods in particular to fight the foreclosure crisis that was sweeping through the community, starting in the mid-'90s. And I want to make a special shout-out to Senator Montgomery, because it was 20 years ago, 20 years ago, that she held a hearing, a community forum, about the foreclosure crisis that was sweeping through the community. And so many people showed up, and it went way into the night, and person after person recounted the exact same scenario, not knowing that what happened to them had happened to their neighbors. And it became kind of eerie in the room, but also very powerful, to hear people talk about how they had basically had their home stolen out from under them. And at the time, the big refinancing scams on the block, because that's how it was happening in the mid-'90s, were being done by one company that had the lion's share, that was really had a hold, does anyone remember that company? Delta Funding. And that hearing, that hearing, thank you Senator Montgomery, led to investigations and prosecutions by the State Attorney General's Office, by the United States Department of Justice, and two other federal agencies, and it also allowed many of us, here we are 20 years later, am I three minutes up?
Yes, yes, you are.
Still in this room, to understand that what was fueling Delta Funding was Wall Street, that it was Wall Street that was benefiting from this wholesale theft. So here we are now, I'm going to share with you just a couple of things.
Hold on, hold on, I need for you, you have a few recommendations that you can give
I have some recommendations.
Okay, can you get, get to that, please?
I will. I'm going to, we'll put on our website, neweconomy.org, newyorkeconomyNYC.org, our presentation, because there's maps, I want to show you how, just how redlined the city is, just how segregated the city is. There are no, zero.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry, can you, I need for you to get you the recommendations.
Okay, I'm sorry, I do feel like some people were able to talk for a really long, long time.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Okay, we just put out a report on foreclosure risk in New York State, and we have found that, you've heard these numbers cited, it comes from our research, that 167,000 pre-foreclosure notices were sent in the year that we studied, 2017, that's the most recent year, and I want to just tell you, the, out of, for the whole state, nine of the 10 most affected zip codes are in New York City.
Recommendations.
Canarsie, Flatlands, et cetera, I'm going to give you these. Recommendations include the following. My understanding is that the Senate, like Senator Montgomery said, has put in a resolution, $20 million for foreclosure prevention legal services. My understanding is that the budget itself is now down to $12 million in the Senate, and that the Assembly still has $20 million. We cannot cut that funding, it would be devastating to go beyond $20 million, which is not itself enough. So please do not reconcile at 12, we need to have 20 or more. The other thing is, there is a whole coalition of labor, community, faith-based, and other groups, civil rights organizations, that are advancing affirmative solutions under the rubric of the Community Equity Agenda. And that agenda has in it a very strong recommendation for building community wealth, and that starts with funding community-based financial institutions, like community development credit unions and loan funds, community-controlled financial institutions that are in the business of serving redlined neighborhoods.
Hold on, ma'am, hold on, hold on, I need for you to sum up.
I'm summing up. The sum up is that in 2007, New York State created a fund for CDFIs, and not $1 has been put in that fund in 12 years. So please legislators, please fund the CDFI fund, it is a very simple, no-brainer, bang-for-buck sort of thing. My other recommendations are in here about.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, hand in your, hand in your recommendations, we're going to look at. Listen, listen, I need you to, I need you to fill me. We don't want to rush you, but I, we want to get as much as possible, if there's something written, we can digest, this is not an exercise in just hearing our voices, we want to do something here. And so by you giving, if you have something written, we would take it, we're going to absorb it, these are quality legislators, so if we're telling you to adhere to a time, it's not to be discourteous, we know this is a passionate issue, but we want to do this right and thorough. And so that is why I'm, you know, I'm playing, playing the bad cop, but I just want to make sure we can get it done correctly. Thank you, hand over your information, and we're going to process information, you're going to stand there. Thank you very much, no, we don't have any questions, no, we don't have any.
Well, the, the other thing that people should recognize is that you're kind of, to some degree, preaching to the choir, and so if you get to your, you spend more time on your recommendations, because we also, we understand how bad the issue is, right? So you don't need to convince us that there's a problem, what we need from you is to understand the specifics of the things that are happening to you, and the things, if you have recommendations, what you think we ought to be doing to, in fact, help you solve these situations. So thank you so much for your cooperation.
And as our next speaker, Catherine Isobie, Senior Staff Attorney from Brooklyn Legal Services, comes up, I just would like to add that one of the prior, budget priorities for the Black Caucus, Black Puerto Rican, Hispanic Asian Caucus this year, is the funding of the CDFIs.
Thank you, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you Borough President, President, Assembly Members, and Senators, and especially my Assembly Member, Tremaine Wright, and my Senator, Velma N. Montgomery. My name is Catherine Isobie, I'm a staff attorney at Brooklyn Legal Services. We are part of the largest provider of civil legal services, and we have the largest foreclosure prevention legal services project, and the oldest. I personally have been doing this work a little over 10 years, and I've spent a lot of time with Yolan Nicholson, picking her brain, even back when she was working with Ed Towns. And I'll try to stay within my time. Going straight to the recommendations, the funding that's been discussed for the Communities First Network is absolutely crucial. We cannot meet the need, you see this room is full of homeowners, we, I checked yesterday, and we have about 6,000, if not more, foreclosures pending in Kings County, and more are on the way, because we have a huge number of pre-foreclosure notices filed, and we had 25,000 foreclosures filed statewide last year, so this isn't over. We can't help everyone with the, as, the resources we have. So this funding is really crucial, not just for legal services, but for housing counselors who do an incredible job helping people to get loan modifications, even in this post-hamp world. Some of the other issues that I wanted to mention are the extension of the provisions in the Civil Practice Law and Rules, Rules and the Real Property Actions and Proceedings Law that were part of the 2008, 2009 foreclosure crisis legislation. Those are going to sunset early next year. We have to extend those, which include the mandatory foreclosure settlement conference and some of the pre-foreclosure notices. And I, I understand that those, the Assembly and Senate have taken up bills to make those permanent, and thank you very much, those are really crucial bills. Another situation that Mr. Barbosa from the Attorney General's Office discussed was the amendments to the Real Property Law 265, I believe it is, you know, concerning deed theft. This is also an area where we've had a lot of frustration, because the, the law didn't have enough teeth, the amendments that have been sponsored, which I believe just passed in the Assembly yesterday, are going to help restore homes. You know, when your car gets stolen and the police find your car, they give it back to you, but when someone steals your house, they don't give it back to you. You have to go to court, you have to hire a lawyer, and, and there aren't a lot of us, and affirmative litigation, to try to get someone's home back takes years, years and years. So this is also going to have a incredible effect on the victims of deed theft. So my time's up, I think I'll just say thank you.
Thank you.
This, our next speaker is going to be Ivy Perez, Senior Policy Research Associate for Centers for New York City Neighborhoods, and we just wanted to acknowledge Ms. Renee Gregory from the Kings County DA's office, is she in here? Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ivy Perez, and I'm the Senior Policy and Research Associate at the Center for New York City Neighborhoods, as she said. Before I skip straight to my recommendations, I'd like to thank State Senator Montgomery, my Senator, Assembly Member Wright, Borough President Adams, and the other cosponsors for holding today's very important hearing on the crisis facing Brooklyn homeowners. As was, as Senator Parker said, preaching a little bit to the choir, but the Center for New York City Neighborhoods promotes and protects affordable homeownership in New York, so that middle and working-class families are able to live in strong, thriving communities. I'd also like to acknowledge the hard work our Brooklyn-based network partners have done for homeowners in the borough, it's a long list, some of whom have testified before, but thanks to the hard work of these organizations, thousands of Brooklyn families have been able to avoid foreclosure and to save their homes. So on that note, I'm going to echo what Catherine Isobie and Sarah Ludwig from New Economy Project said about the need for the full $20 million in the budget for Communities First funding, that number was reduced to $12 million in the bill, I believe, so we really need the full $20 million. Some other solutions that I would like to echo are the need for greater deed theft protections, so there's a number of bills about that also, and I'd also like to talk about the rampant, aggressive, and increasing speculation that's been happening in these communities, which is in turn pushing up housing prices, which is in turn pushing up property taxes and making it harder for homeowners to stay home, to stay in their homes. So I'm urging to, in addition to the deed theft bill and the Communities First funding, to also pass an anti-speculation bill, or a flip tax bill, that would make it harder and disincentivize flipping and promote, and promote affordable homeownership by increasing the existing real property transfer tax. Finally, another issue that also needs a lot of work, it's at the city level, but the tax lien sale is something that puts a lot of LMI homeowners at risk of having their home sold. The taxing sale also disproportionately impacts communities of color. We found that the city is six times more likely to sell a lien in a majority African-American neighborhood than in a majority white neighborhood, and twice as likely to sell a lien in a majority Hispanic neighborhood. So what we'd like is the city, they've already made great strides in introducing recently new property tax payments, but we'd like them to work even harder to have their affordable housing policy be in line, and perhaps not sell tax liens for small homes altogether. We look forward to working with you to continue to promote affordable homeownership in Brooklyn, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I'd like to call our next speaker, Julie Howe, Senior Staff Attorney, Foreclosure Prevention Project, the New York Legal Assistance Group.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Julianne Howe, I'm a senior attorney with the New York Legal Assistance Group, NILAG for short. First, I'd like to thank Senator Montgomery, and Borough President Adams, and Assembly Member Wright for holding today's very important hearing. NILAG is a nonprofit legal services provider based in New York City. We address emerging and urgent legal needs with comprehensive, free civil legal services, impact litigation, policy advocacy, and community education. Our foreclosure prevention project advocates every day to keep people in their homes. We represent homeowners throughout their foreclosure cases and negotiate with mortgage servicers and debt buyers that are more and more reluctant to offer affordable loan modifications. We also provide outreach and education to ensure communities know their rights and avoid fraudulent practices, and the fraudulent practices are what I'm going to talk about today. In Brooklyn, foreclosure auctions remain at their highest level since 2009, as we know, fewer homeowners are able to resolve their foreclosure cases with traditional modifications, and as a result, homeowners become desperate for assistance, and it's that desperation that leaves homeowners vulnerable to scam companies, unless they have access to high-quality, free legal services. Companies that target unsophisticated homeowners, often for whom English is not their primary language, affiliate themselves with seemingly reputable law firms and lawyers in order to establish false credibility. And as such, these scam companies exploit a loophole in the law that protects attorneys and law firms from prosecution under the Distressed Property Consultant Act. Scam companies are thereby able to avoid legal repercussions simply by having an attorney agree to affiliate his or her name with the company, even if the attorney doesn't do anything for this client. For example, NILAG worked with a client from East New York who paid a company approximately $14,000 for assistance with a loan modification. The client trusted this company because they had an attorney working with them, and their contracts had this attorney's letterhead on it. However, the company did absolutely nothing for this client, and in fact, told him to stop paying his mortgage, which then landed him in foreclosure proceedings. Moreover, when the client asked for his money back from this company, they were able to refuse to give it to him because of this attorney loophole, they were able to say that they are not breaking the law. In order to get money back for clients like this, NILAG has had to In order to get money back for clients like this, NILAG has had to engage in extensive litigation and again, courts are inconsistent in how they apply the law. We're currently waiting for a decision on appeal about whether or not the court is going to hold an attorney accountable for scamming a client out of about $17,000. So my recommendation in terms of legislation is to amend Real Property Law Section 265B of the Distressed Property Consultant Act in order to get rid of this attorney loophole. The language that we, NILAG and some of our partner organizations have recommended is to only have a loophole for attorneys who are providing legal representation in foreclosure proceedings. And that way attorneys would not be protected if they're not actually representing the client. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Ali Nami. Sorry if I mispronounced the last name. Senior Staff Attorney, Mobilization for Justice.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, panel, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. I'm a foreclosure prevention attorney at Mobilization for Justice. Some of you may know us by our prior name, MFY Legal Services. We've been providing free legal services to low-income New Yorkers for about 57 years. Everyone here knows what a big problem deed theft, mortgage scams, mod scams in Brooklyn are. And in preparing for this, I realized that two-thirds of my Brooklyn cases are east of Northrend Avenue. So it tells you how big a problem it is and how concentrated it is in certain parts of Brooklyn. I'll skip to the recommendations. Senator Montgomery, your bill, Senate 1688, to prevent deed theft is very important. So we thank you for that and certainly hope it gets passed into legislation. The second thing I want to really hammer away at is the funding is absolutely critical. Our current funding level statewide is $20 million a year. This is not enough in and of itself. So for that to go down from 20, to go from 20 down to 12 is not something that would do the job at all. My colleague Catherine Asobi mentioned that it's very, very hard to undo deed theft cases because they require affirmative litigation. And right now, because of the funding levels, pretty much all we take are defensive cases. Like if someone calls and says, "I've already lost my home, can you engage in four years of advocacy to get it back?" We're bound to say no because we were trying to triage. We have all these homeowners who are sued in foreclosure actions and need representation to keep them in the house right away. So the funding is absolutely critical. Other folks mentioned making permanent the two protections, the pre-foreclosure notices and the settlement conferences. And we're very thankful that the Assembly and the House and their budget bills have proposed language to that effect. Last thing I want to mention, that's really critical, Borough President Adams, you talked about it very movingly. Without the ability to pass down wealth accumulated in your property, you can't build community wealth. You just can't do it. And I know of only a single person who does trust in estates law in Brooklyn, only a single legal services attorney, and half his time is spent on foreclosure. So the number of clients calling us saying, "I'm in this foreclosure, but there's this complication with the deed or with some estate stuff that we can't help," is truly alarming. As far as I know, there are no bills right now to fund trust in estates work for low-income homeowners, but it's absolutely critical because like you've all mentioned, you can spend a lifetime billing equity and like buying a house, fixing it up. If you can't pass it down, if you know, God forbid, you pass away before you have a will and there's no one to handle those matters, it's extremely easy to lose everything. So thank you for the time. If you don't have any questions, I'll...
Well, thank you, Ali. If you would give us any written comments on the deed theft legislation...
A memo of support is what you need.
A memo of support, yes. And comments on any suggestions for improvements. Thank you.
Ali, I know you guys are going to be in Albany next week, so tell Tiffany and Jeanette I look forward to seeing them and bring that memo.
I will, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Demetrius Mills, President of the Brooklyn Queensland Trust.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I think everyone on the DAZ know who I am, know that we are activists for community gardens. One of the biggest issues today is it seems like they're trying to take them away from us. My name is Demetrius Mills, President of the Brooklyn Queensland Trust, a 501(c)(3) organization that owns 35 properties that are used as community gardens for the benefit of the neighborhood residents. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and thank you to Borough President Eric Adams, State Senator Montgomery, Kevin Parker is there and Tremaine is there. Thank all of you. Okay. This past year has been very trying for our organization. Because of an avalanche of violations amounting to thousands of dollars that have accumulated over a number of years unbeknownst to us and increased over time due to interest charges, it has brought all of our work to a halt because a hold was placed on Brooklyn Queensland Trust contracts with New York City Department of Parks and the DYC, our major funders. Problems we've encountered in an effort to resolve the problems. First, violations become liens on properties. In addition to having a hold on city contracts, we're faced with liens on several of our properties. Our board felt that we needed to pay and take out loans regardless of the merit of the charges since our properties were at stake. Secondly, it is very difficult to communicate with the Department of Finance. The DOF website says you can write to a post office box in New Jersey, call 311, or go to the Brooklyn Business Center in the municipal building that will take a check and debit card to pay when you owe. Our staff have tried that. Inquiries have been dictated to a 311 responder who then calls the Department of Finance. The answer was then relayed to our staff, but never resulted in resolutions of the issues. Third, community gardens are not solely responsible for rat infestation. It is a neighborhood problem that needs to be addressed in a holistic manner. Yet repeatedly, Brooklyn Queensland Trust is singled out when there is a rat infestation in a neighborhood. Even after we tried, we hired a pest control company, the Department of Health personnel found the treatment inadequate. So we're spending money and then they tell us it's not enough money, but they're not telling us how to correct the problem. We were, in addition, we were told to organize a...
Excuse me, Mr. Mills? Can you give us just all of the recommendations without...
Information for you. Okay, you note, note that the city owns community gardens with rat infestation and are not cited or do not have to pay any fines. Fourth, it can be devastating for a small organization with $160,000 budget to come up with close to $15,000 with no way to recruit that money. What is worse is that we have proof that some of our charges were either dismissed years ago unwarranted, such as charges BQLT double because the community garden makes up two lots. In other words, we got two lots and one address and they gave us two tickets. We hope this information is helpful to you to improve the services to the public and prevent heavy-handed approach for city agencies. What I have is a list of the fines that we've got. I have a list of the violations that we have gotten.
Did you provide us a copy of that testimony here?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Yeah, we have time.
I have three minutes.
No, yeah, ten. Three minutes is done. Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
And our next speaker will be Lori Daniel Favors, GC at the Center for Law and Social Justice at McNevever's College. Thank you. I don't see the...
We have a copy of your testimony?
Okay, thank you so much. Perfect.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Of those fines?
Thank you. My name is Lori Daniel Favors. I'm an attorney and I serve as the General Counsel for the Center for Law and Social Justice at McNevever's College. I will be speaking briefly due to time constraints. The mission of CLSJ is to serve as a racial justice law center and to provide quality advocacy, conduct research and advocacy training services in a personal manner to people of African descent and to disenfranchised communities. From our initial days, we have worked to support local community efforts for community center development and in 2017, we joined in the fight for the survival of HDFCs in New York City. Working to support the HDFC Coalition and the Brooklyn HDFC Coalition, we met with several shareholders and tenants who were facing foreclosures by the City of New York for outstanding tax, water and sewer payments. Let us be clear that the current crisis in the HDFC program is due to a lack of effective maintenance of effort by city agencies, agencies over which the state has oversight, and city agents to educate and support the current low-income shareholders and tenants in maintaining their properties and the gross failure to be in communication with and in support of these stakeholders, shareholders and tenants regarding their rights and responsibilities. Be clear that this crisis is devastating to black, brown and low-income homeowners and the outcome of this crisis is within the city's hands and control. On to recommendations. The first is that we call for, we join in the call for a moratorium on all current foreclosures for a minimum of two years or until such time that a new HDFC program is established to halt and reverse foreclosures that were processed through the faulty third-party transfer program from 2015 through the present day. City agencies charged with funding preferential phone and capital programs to finance rehabilitation under TPT programs should withhold such funds until such time an investigation has been conducted to determine not just if city agencies were operating within the spirit and letter of distressed properties laws and procedures, not just the impact of this program on families of communities of color, but also how to reinstate the homeowners whose ownership rights were wrongfully taken from them. We are calling for a multi-agency HDFC working group to design the new program. This working group must include all the responsible city agencies, HPD, DOF, DOB, DEP, as well as HDFC coalitions and council representatives, to design the new program and create effective city co-op communications, co-op supports and housing crisis prevention models. In addition, the working group should review the current problematic foreclosure processes and institute or recommend necessary changes and institute a foreclosure prevention program, early warning base that is triggered by mistax water, sewer payments and/or other agreed-upon triggering events. This must be, this program must be provided and fully funded in order to ensure homeowners receive the appropriate, appropriate and equitable supports necessary to save their homes. Number three, due to the circumstances that led to the foreclosure crisis and the city's part in the creation of this crisis, the Article 11 Tax Amnesty or a General Tax Amnesty and Water Sewer Awareness Forgiveness Program should be made available to all HDFCs and homeowners who are currently facing foreclosure or are in city serious arrears. Number four, a census of all HDFC buildings must be conducted by the city to determine the actual state of the buildings along with the creation of a New York City Emergency HDFC and Homeowner Repair Fund to bring all buildings up to code by a date certain. An expanded HDFC technical assistance and support program must be created with a mandate to service every HDFC and homeowner. An individual support plan must be created for each of these homes with available professional accounting and legal services to provide support as needed by the homeowner as opposed to a one-size-fits-all training. All homeowners should be eligible for the same or discounted loan and tax rates, particularly on tax sewer and utility bills that other third-party transfer developers receive. I have copies of my testimony.
Our next speaker will be Brenda Stokely, the Co-Chair of Brooklyn HDFC Coalition, and Lori Kelly of the 111 Linden Street HDFC. I'm sorry, it's three of you, aren't there? I.O. Harrington is also with you. And I have I.O. Harrington from the Lower East Side. Okay, excellent. Thank you.
One, I'm not going to say thank you to you.
Don't waste time on us.
I know. I'm saying that I am grateful that you exist and you have the courage to take this issue on, okay? I'm going to start with, I'm just going to say briefly that the Coalition for HDFCs was started in response as a grassroots organization that started to protest what was going on in HPD in terms of trying to put paternalistic punitive regulatory agreements on the backs of people that were already grieving and struggling to try to do what was right. We did not need some paternalism to try to get us out of the way, which was to pave the way for what they're doing now. Because as we were fighting that and we won it, then the next thing we knew, this list came out. And the list was the foreclosure list for the whole city. So I'm going to start, I'm not going to go back, you have my testimony, so I'm not going to read it. I'm not a person that usually reads testimonies in the first place. I'm just going to talk about what I think is the first order of business that could have happened and saved people's homes. And only a few handful of city council members took on and used their power to do that. And that's if it could have taken the building off of the foreclosure list. That's what happened with Van Sickleby, the barons. That's what they did. And a few other places did the same thing, city council did, but very few, very few. That would have stopped it all. Because like all the letters that you sent, we got letters and sent letters. We had a lot of hot air about the moratorium and still they went on and implemented because the people, the elephant that's in this room is the building and the real estate that pays and supports a lot of elected officials, including the mayor. There has not been a mayor in New York City that didn't have the backing of the real estate. So that's what, so it takes courage to talk about this and it takes courage to say, "I'm taking my people off of this list." So we won't have to go through no TPT because it shouldn't have been existed in the first place. And I'm not going to go through all the legal mumbo jumbo. The thing is you have a right to a house. That is a human right. When people took these houses over, the slum landlords had left them and debris, didn't pay taxes and not one of them went to jail. Not one of them went to jail. And you stayed there struggling. All of us are in HDFCs that are standing in front of you. We're not talking about them. We live in them and we struggle to keep them going and affordable for people. But they don't want us there because we're in gentrified areas now. Before, we were in areas that nobody wanted to go to. Now they want you to leave and they're going to come in. So I'm going to, thank you. So we have three other people that live in HDFCs that have been fighting for decades to save their buildings. I want you to take a moment to listen very carefully to them and what they need.
Thank you.
My name is Lori Kelly. I'm currently, I live in Bushwick. I've lived in Bushwick the last 20 years. When we moved into the building in Bushwick, it was a crack den. The whole neighborhood, it was burnt out. No one wanted to live there. We moved in, my husband and I, we bought our apartments. We cleaned the whole building out, literally. We cleaned out six apartments. We were with the 83rd precinct. We joined the clean hallway thing they have. The cops would come in. We put all the crackheads, all the drug dealers out. When we did that, Bushwick, where we live, started to change a lot. We had a lot of families, a lot of low-income families that you, there was no hallways and the light, no lights in the hallway. You didn't want to walk in the building. You were afraid with your kids. Once that started to change, the neighborhoods started to change. We have been fighting this for years. Within the last three years, we've gone to our council members, we've gone to UHAB, we've gone to HPD. We have been told, "Oh, get a loan from UHAB to pay back taxes." We went to UHAB, UHAB said, "Lower East Side, we'll do it." They wanted something like $200,000... They wanted something like $200,000 to put this loan package together. That, we couldn't do that. We have families that we take care of that have lived there for generations, and it's not fair. We took our own money, our own credit cards. We put tens of thousands of dollars into our building to fix it up, to rent it, not at market value, but at least enough that we could generate income to get us back on route. We went to our, um, Antonio Reynoso's office. He came, his assistant came, and saw everything that went on. They were impressed. They said, we're on board. Two days after the third-party transfer list came out, we got an email saying they weren't. We even filled out Article 11 with the help of the Coalition. Um, we brought it to H P D. We hand-delivered it. It was left on a desk of an H P D employee that retired. So we never, never, our article never made it to the light of day to even be considered to be taken off the third-party transfer because of the negligence of H P D. All I'm saying is that there's a lot of families struggling in New York City. I don't care what color you are. No one is making a fair wage, and we all need a place to live, because we're all families. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Erica Taylor, and my sto, no, sorry, there we go. My story is a story. But 25 years ago, I purchased an apartment for $250 with a 99-year lease. February 1st of 2019, I got a lease for one year, and after that one year, I don't know what's gonna happen. But my, I have a long story. My story's in, um, K C P, on the 19th article of series in the article of the, um, Kings County Politics. You can read about me in there. But I only have two questions. I wanna know, why couldn't we receive the same financial assistance and incentives that are being offered to the T P T developers? And why didn't we, why couldn't we receive, um, or have access to foreclosure prevention services? And, and, and that's what I need to know, as a shareholder. We needed help and couldn't get the help.
Thank you. So I don't know those answers off the top, but we will get to the bottom of it, so that that's what this is for, so that we can find out what is it that we need to be following through upon. Thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you.
Before I O speaks, I was asked to go over the recommendations. They are in the, uh, package. One that's very important is that there are 17 entities that get exempt from paying water taxes.
Ms. Stokely?
Uh-huh.
I have to interrupt you, because we are on the schedule, and we need to, you've already had your three minutes, so we do need to get to the rest of the people. So we do have your testimony.
Okay.
And so we've seen all of the recommendations.
So somebody just came and told me to repeat.
Oh, no, you don't need to repeat.
We've got you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, ma'am, what's your name?
Yeah, my name is I O Harrington. Uh, I am a shareholder. I, uh, established an organization, as, uh, folks did here in Brooklyn, um, in response to a lot of stuff that was happening with H P D and their attempt to take over our buildings without any discussion with us and tell us what they thought would be good for us. And now what's happening, of course, is, is that we've got a lot of slumlord working in these agencies, doing the jobs that slumlords used to do by creating policies and, um, rules that are not meant to support us, but are really meant to hurt us and to remove us from the properties that we helped to renovate. So I wanna thank you, Senator Montgomery. It's very nice to see you again, Borough President Adams, and of course, my own Assembly Member, Brian Kavanaugh, who chairs this committee. Hey, Brian. Hey. So basically, H D F Cs, we've got about, uh, 1,200 buildings of H D F Cs across the city. We have over 30,000 families who live in these buildings, um, and many of us did a lot of sweat equity. Some people think, oh, you were just given the building, you know, you paid $250. Not at all. We spent many years with our bare hands. We didn't have all the fancy equipment that developers have, with our bare hands, removing wood and glass and bricks and carrying them six floors down and going back up and doing the same, spending years in our buildings once a week in order to make sure that nobody came in and stole, uh, you know, or destroyed the work that we had done. So we have put a lot into these communities, and once we moved into them, including in my own building, where we'll now have been for 30 years, we didn't just stop there. We actually moved into bu, blocks that were already abandoned, half abandoned. And so we went out and we brought community-based organizations to our block. We bought affordable housing to our block. We cleared vacant land and created public green space for our block, and all of a sudden, our neighborhoods become, have become destination places. And we have created, not that that was our intent, an economic boom for the city, all right? But also, we have created something that we didn't really want to do, and these cracks and nuances and the policies have allowed people who are not income-eligible to move into our buildings, take over our buildings, then tell us what to do with our buildings, and then leave and want to increase the sale to a price that my neighbor will not be able to afford when I move out or keel over, one or the other. That is not acceptable. So what I wanna say here is, is that we have a lot of recommendations, and we will be making some very formal revised recommendations, partly based on what we've heard here today, but here are a few. All right? First of all, reinstate homeowners who lost their properties. Remove our buildings from the foreclosure list. Put a moratorium on adding others to the foreclosure list. Place a monitor over H P D, um, so, over H P D, so that they can be accountable to us for all of these different housing structures we're discussing today. Work with us, us, on legislation, uh, so that the nuances of our legal structure and our practices are not lost in the legislation that you create. Forgive us water and sewer taxes in perpetuity. Make us the 18th entity in this city who is, who are considered so important to the survival of the city that they are forgiven those. But we've got a $3,000 water bill, and all of a sudden, we're in foreclosure. Not acceptable. We wanna make sure that there are courts, I'm gonna make it really quick, that there are judges who are trained on each H D F C structure from Manhattan and Brooklyn. Um, we need more of them. We need our cases to be referred to people who understand who we are. Um, and the last thing that I wanna say is really, really important, and that is...
Hold on, ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. Turn it in, and we, ma'am. Okay.
Say, make sure that, you know, you work, we work in solidarity with all shareholders. But when it comes to us, and it's mostly Black and Brown people, we don't want anyone to speak for us. We represent ourselves. We don't want anybody to try to tell our stories because they think that they are more articulate than we are, because many of them are people with white privilege who will never be able to imagine or understand what it is to be Black or Brown, and that is another reason why we are here today. It's how we got here.
Thank you very much. Um, our next speaker will be Allison Martinez, um, the Co-Chair of the Land Use Committee of CB 17.
Hello, everyone. I just wanna thank you for having...
We get to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, I O. Good to see you.
My name is Allison Martinez. I am Co-Chair of the Land Use Committee of Brooklyn Community Board 17. We have actually tried to become essentially our own, um, community lobbyists, because we're actually afraid of what we're seeing happen to our seniors especially. And my concern is about T P T with, with its current application is essentially becoming a perverse form of eminent domain that is creating a new sharecropper class within the Black and Latino community. So I'm gonna skip straight to our recommendations. One is to put Brooklyn back on the cease and desist zone list so that we are less interesting to developers, to be a target for, um, marketing initiatives. Also, require H P D and, um, Neighborhood Restore Housing Development Fund Corporation to be more transparent and create a layperson summary, because it doesn't make sense that no one can see what the rules and regulations are for how you get on the T P T list, let alone then be informed of how you get off. Then devise a more immediate and timely outreach strategy to residents and homeowners so that people can be informed and have reasonable time and appropriate measures taken to get off the list and, and make whatever changes may be necessary. Then we also want to, um, have some support funding-wise for galvanizing the community for a construction-organized local resident group that would allow construction, um, tradespeople within our community to use this opportunity to get OSHA credits, to get licensing that they can then use to create, create more additional wealth and community investment in our, where we live. Um, then also, we want to do the same thing when it comes to, um, organizing community organizations such as N H S Brook, N H S Brooklyn and Habitat for Humanity, as well as organizing lawyers to be able to get pro bono credit for work they do within the community to help people with, maintain their homes. Then, we would also like to develop a study of the disparate racial impact of this program and develop a resource library of materials to educate the community at large regarding how this works and other, basically other, um, laws that basically provide the same, um, targeting in our community. If the T P T program continues, we also would like to add a civilian review board component to it that includes average New Yorkers. The mayor should be limited to only appointing two members at most. I don't want it to be stockpiled with people who have the, basically, the mayor's interest and not the, the, the interest of average people. Um, and the review board's role would not be solely advisory, but have an actual voting interest and a board membership seat on, um, H P D specifically for this and with, um, the, sorry, the Neighborhood Restore Housing Development Funding Corp. Those are essentially what we perceive as we need to have a community lobbyist work, um, action, which means that the actual people who live here are not just told from the top down what the new, new rules will be, but we actually have a part in what happens in our community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Enid Braun and Patrice Ujua, Brooklyn homeowners. I need you guys to understand that you submitted as one, so you have three minutes together?
I have two or three minutes.
Okay, but, so we just wanna bring you guys together, know that it is...
There is a whole group of people.
So, yes, it's a three-minute share? Okay.
Who are here and so understand this is a rampant problem. Like many homeowners damaged by adjacent construction, my husband and I are seniors. This problem is epidemic in historically Black, Latino, and immigrant neighborhoods facing significant real estate speculation. Developers acquire and demolish houses, sometimes through foreclosure, to build much larger market-rate housing, often damaging adjacent longtime residents. Many believe this is done on purpose to intimidate neighbors to sell. Construction law is complex and esoteric. People don't know their rights and often cannot afford to exercise them. Those of us who do sue not only fear for our homes, but also for whatever nest egg we may have. A document detailing these problems developed by a group of affected neighbors is included with my written testimony. D O B is the only enforcer of a confusing mix of Senate laws, legal precedent, and city regulations that supposedly protect adjacent neighbors. Eight eighty-one law protects developers' rights to excavate, encroach on, and underpin neighbors' houses. License or party wall agreements are supposed to be in place to protect adjacent neighbors, but D O B grants excavation permits without checking, and most homeowners don't even know they're entitled to this. The cost of an attorney and a structural engineer can easily reach $10,000. An escrow or bonding requirement funded by developers should allow homeowners to hire their own professionals and gain repairs if damages occur. Insurance policies typically exclude foundation damage due to earth movement, whether from man-made or natural causes. Though regulations forbid like developer liability insurance from excluding the type of work being permitted, D O B never reviews policies, only the excavation permits. I mean, only, sorry, the, uh, certificates that show aggregate limits. Every homeowner's policy has the same exclusion, so we have nowhere to turn. We need L L C transparency reform. As L L Cs, the same developers can damage multiple homes all over the city, and there's no way to track them. D O B often knows these repeat bad actors, but cannot deny permits or flag them. I know homeowners being pressured to sign a license agreement with a developer whose business address is just a post office box. L L Cs can dissolve and reorganize so that even if a homeowner wins a lawsuit, there may be no way to collect. This same accountability faces tenants with bad landlords. And finally, it is the state's responsibility to regulate the insurance industry. The earth movement exclusion is insidious. Sellers of non-complying liability policies to contractors and developers should be barred from doing business here. We have additional information and recommendations to share with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna take 15 seconds, and what I'm talking about is homeowners that have disabilities, cognitive disabilities and otherwise, that are unable to address these issues that other people address with, with or without lawyers, and there needs to be a change in that.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hear from Richard Flatow, the Chair of Community Board Three.
Protocol having been established, um, my name is Richard Flatow, and I was a victim of property fraud, believe it or not. I'd like to give a brief synopsis of my story, and then I'm gonna offer four policy and legislative recommendations. By way of background, I'm the owner of Flatow Realty Corp., and I'm also Chairman of Community Board Three, Brooklyn. I was one of the victims of Adurig B Ogundiren, who was sentenced last May for crimes involving six properties in Brooklyn. The perpetrator forged my signature and then had a fraudulent notary on her power of attorney and filed that document on November 10th, 2016. The next day, I awoke to an alert of his fraud with an email from Accrus indicating that someone had filed, had recorded a power of attorney against my property. I immediately took action by filing a complaint with the Brooklyn District Attorney's Office and the New York City Sheriff. As a result of the perpetrator's actions, my business and personal relationships were put under tremendous stress. In addition, for several months, I was not certain whether my identity was stolen. However, because of my background, I was able to act quickly. In short order, a press conference was held with the help of New York City Council Member Robert Carnegie, and with the support of the N double A C P, Brooklyn Legal Services, State Senator Montgomery, the Bed-Stuy Gateway Bid, and the Bedford-Stuyvesant Real Estate Board. That publicity helped to smoke out the perpetrator. And I'd like to publicly thank the, the Sheriff's Office and the Brooklyn D A for their diligent work in bringing the perpetrator to justice. So now, I'd just like to offer four policy and legislative recommendations based on my experience. One, uh, it should be a mad, a statewide mandate for owner notification. All counties in New York State should be required to notify property owners whenever documents are recorded against their property. Number two, enhance the security of notary information. I might get into the details, but it's pretty scary, uh, but one simple measure would be to omit all but the last four digits of the license number online. Number three, increase penalties for fraud involving notaries. The state legislature should consider increasing the civil and criminal penalties for fraud involving notaries. Last, uh, number four, enhance the integrity and security of real property recording. Any documents not recorded by title companies in county clerk's offices should be carefully reviewed. In addition, resources should be put in, put into training workers in local county clerk's offices to exercise some thought and to become better at spotting unusual transactions which might be fraudulent. Finally, it would be much easier to catch fraudsters if all persons delivering documents to the county clerk's offices were videotaped. Thank you for allowing me to, uh, give my testimony.
In one second, we have a question.
First of all, uh, thank you for those, those recommendations, and I'm hoping, um, my, my state colleagues, uh, really look at them, because those are some reasonable recommendations, uh, particularly. look at them, because those are some reasonable recommendations, particularly around the video and the photographs. Tell me, how were you notified?
I was notified, because I had a tight time limit, I said ACRS, which is the acronym, that's Automated City Registered Information System. So I would recommend that all homeowners should sign up for getting a notification with ACRS. It's free, and you will be notified almost instantly. I found out within a day that somebody had filed a fraudulent power of attorney against me. I got an email from ACRS, that's how I found out. And I've heard many of the speakers talk about how difficult and expensive it is to reverse something. So if you can act very quickly, you know, you could avoid some of those costs and, you know.
Do you know that the notifications come through, what, email?
I got the notification by email, it was actually a holiday.
Yeah.
It was November 11th, I think that was Veterans Day or something, so I got notification. The person was a schemer, so he had filed this thing like the day before a holiday.
Wow.
And then I was able to find out on a holiday through email from ACRS.
And the notification was telling you that your...
It told me that some document had been recorded against my property, so then I went online, I checked, I saw there was a power of attorney that said that somebody had power of attorney over my property. So if I didn't stop them, the next thing would have been, they probably would have tried to get a mortgage and maybe transfer the deed or something. Yeah.
Great, great. You included your recommendations in the record?
Yes.
Okay, great.
All right.
And could I just say this? I try never to vote on a legislation that enhances penalties, criminal penalties, but on this, I promise you, I will vote yes. I'll even be on the bill.
Thank you, thank you very much. I want to just acknowledge that we've been joined by Nick Perry, who is our immediately outgoing Chair of the Black and Puerto Rican Caucus, who has joined us here today. Welcome, Assemblyman. And Senator Jackson is here. Where's Senator Jackson? I don't see him.
He's sitting down here.
Oh, oh, well, can we get a chair up here for him? Because this is really, he's become my best friend, because he talks loud, just like me. He yells at people, so I like him very much.
But I'm talking loud, but, and definitely saying something. I'm not saying that you're not saying anything, because the bottom line is...
And he is coming from a hearing where he was representing the children in the City of New York with a Board of Ed hearing. I'm going to, you know, he's complaining because he's in the lower house, I'm sorry, Nick. The Senator's, yes, Senator's speak first. So, so, we're gonna go finish up, and then we will have our comments, and I'm especially looking forward to the Chair of the Housing Committee in the Senate, yes, to speak before, when everything is done and before we end our meeting. So we have, what, how many more do we have?
We have three more people.
Three more testimonies, and then we will be responding based on what we've heard here today, so thank you.
Yes. Next, we'll have Sarah Filcher, Senior Staff Attorney, Brooklyn Bar Association. Oh, and we've been joined, we skipped you. Okay. We will call you back. Okay. He's the last one.
Thank you.
Yes, we have. Please.
Well, thank you to the Borough Hall President, the Assembly Members present, and the Senators for hearing us today on this important issue. I'd like to echo the comments that my colleagues have made earlier this afternoon, so I will try to keep my comments very brief. My name is Sarah Filcher, and I'm a staff attorney with the Brooklyn Volunteer Lawyers Project. We're a nonprofit legal service provider that focuses exclusively on serving low-income residents of Brooklyn facing a variety of civil legal issues, including foreclosure prevention. Today, I will skip straight ahead to the policy recommendations. Given the urgency of the funding issues, I will focus almost exclusively on funding for the Communities First Campaign. You've heard repeatedly this afternoon how important it is not only to extend this funding, but to extend it in the full amount of $20 million. This funding is essential to ensure ongoing accessibility to consumer protections, to assist older adults to prevent financial fraud, and to preserve affordable housing across the borough. Train legal advocates and housing counselors ensure that city, state, and federal consumer protections are accessible to all homeowners regardless of income. I'd like to share with you a quote from a client. She said that going through the foreclosure process, "It feels like you're trying to learn how to fix a car while driving in the middle of a NASCAR race." This is what my clients are going through, and without the funding for the Communities First Campaign, these clients will be going through it alone, and I shudder at the thought. Brooklyn cannot afford to lose or reverse the progress that has been made since the Great Recession. One demographic that we haven't had time to speak about this afternoon, but they deserve our attention, is older adults. You may be surprised to learn how many older adults are at risk of requiring foreclosure prevention services. Nationwide, approximately 38% of households headed by a person age 65 to 74 are carrying debt secured by their primary residence. Approximately 26% of households headed by a person age 75 years or older are carrying debt secured by their primary residence, and these figures are only expected to rise as the Baby Boomer generation ages. Aging in place is becoming an even greater challenge for older adults in Brooklyn. We've talked about many of the reasons why this afternoon already, so I won't belabor that point. But I do want to emphasize that creating and preserving affordable housing in Brooklyn is not just an issue for renters, this is an issue for renters and homeowners alike. So please don't get lured into that false dichotomy that this is a landlord-tenant issue only, and that the issue is all resolved for homeowners. Homeowners still, you need your attention too. They create affordable housing for both homeowners and tenants who share in the homes that they love in Brooklyn. So I'd urge you to read my written testimony for a remainder of important statistics and a client's story that I'd like to share with you, and I thank you so much for the time this afternoon to speak with you.
Thank you. Thank you. And our next speaker will be Patrick Pranow.
Pirino.
Pirino, sorry about that. Supervising Attorney for Closure Prevention Program at Canva Legal Services.
Okay, so I'm gonna have to go a little bit off script for the purpose of brevity, to be brief, so that I could allow others to speak, but suffice it to say that I am the Supervising Attorney for Canva Legal Services. We're a nonprofit agency located in Brooklyn. It's the legal services arm of Canva Incorporated, which has been providing services in New York for the most part since the '80s, and Canva Legal in particular, since 1993. We currently provide services in our legal unit to over 4,000 individuals in Kings County each year, and Canva has served over 45,000 individuals and families in the five boroughs of New York City. The foreclosure program was begun in 2008 to address this crisis, and subsequently in 2009, that's when we began providing legal services as an additional component to what we do. My colleagues have already spoken about this crisis, how things have not gotten better. In fact, there's been a reversal of policies on the part of the banks, and things have actually have gotten worse. So while property values have gone up, that has in turn had the opposite effect for homeowners, because the banks are now leveraging this purported equity as a basis to deny the homeowners the right to retain their homes. They do this in a way of, the way they modify their mortgages. So for the purposes of a modification, the bank will take only the principal balance and suggest that, well, if you owe $500,000, your property is worth $700,000, then you have equity in the home, not adding the additional interest, which could be $200,000, $300,000, making it essentially a property without any equity, but to default them from receiving a modification for that purpose. But they will not say to the courts when they pursue a judgment of foreclosure and sale, that they're only pursuing it on the unpaid principal balance. They'll ask for the additional interest in that respect. So it's something that they're getting away with in the courts, and quite frankly, as my colleagues have mentioned previously, we need a little bit more from the courts in terms of enforcement. 348 needs to be strengthened by way of recommendation. The funding that we receive, it is essential that we maintain it. My program has lost one attorney, we're losing another one at the end of March, and I will be the only person to represent clients in Kings County for Canva Legal Services. And quite frankly, you know, this is something that is not tenable, and personally, I've lived two blocks from the organization that I work for over 30 years. So this is very personal to me, that I am representing the neighborhood that I grew up in and individuals that I've seen lose their properties. But to say that we've not lost one property since the inception of our program, which is a testament to the funding, what we've been able to do. Now, please, there's one thing that has not been mentioned in that I came across in Albany. The investors have access to the banks, they have a pipeline to purchase notes. The investors can basically buy a property in two different ways. They'll buy the note from the bank, and then they'll turn around and purchase the deed from the homeowner. Now, what they do with that, I don't know, but if they have access to those types of resources, why can't we? Why can't we set aside funding to, we ask athletes to go back into their communities and purchase blocks of properties to improve them, why can't New York City create a fund to purchase the notes from Ocwen, from all these other investors, and these, the private equity funds, much in the same way as the investors are doing to their advantage? Why can't we do that? That's my question. And also, I would also echo the request for moratorium on foreclosures. I thank you for your time.
By the way, I think some of these issues may be definitely related to the federal laws, and I want to acknowledge Michelle Brotman, who is here. All right, thank you. Michelle is representing Congressman Hakeem Jeffries, and we will definitely be making sure that the members of Congress are included in this, and so that they can take whatever steps they are able to help us with, especially with the banking issues.
The next person we'll hear from is Scott Kowalski, Project Director, Home Stability Project, City Bar Justice Center.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Elected Senator Montgomery, I'm in your district, I love you, I couldn't be prouder.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Kowalski, I'm an attorney, and I direct the Homeowner Stability Project at the City Bar Justice Center, we're part of the New York City Bar Association. We provide free legal services to low and moderate income homeowners throughout New York City. We leverage, we do this directly, and we leverage the resources of the private bar, we get pro bono resources from attorneys, and we do give credit, CLE credit, to those attorneys. We aim to preserve homeownership, stabilize communities, keep families intact and in place, address economic and social inequities, and protect the housing of the most vulnerable New York City residents, namely seniors, those living with disabilities, and individuals who belong to historically disadvantaged populations such as LGBTQ folk, immigrants, and particularly people of color. My testimony today is based on my experience on the front lines of homeowner stability work for the last decade. I can say without reservation that this is a vital racial and economic justice issue. The majority of our clients are African-American and face a disproportionate level of home loss compared to other demographics. This is due to historic exclusion from lending opportunities, increased predation, and continued discrimination in lending and marketing practices. For several years, I have staffed a friend of the court clinic here in Kings County, right here across the street. It's every Tuesday morning in Justice Noak Deere's Park, where all new residential mortgage foreclosure cases in Kings County are referred once they are released from the Settlement Conference Park. We conduct intakes, we go over options for unrepresented homeowners, we sit with defendants in the conferences, and we determine if we can assist them on an ongoing basis, including litigation, or if we should refer them to our network partners, who are all here in the front row. We also assist homeowners and heirs with other sorts of legal services, such as protection from predatory lending and investing schemes, transfers of property to heirs following the death of a head of household, and financial life and estate planning. There are especially unique issues that face senior homeowners, specifically diminishing capacity and lack of familial and community support to make sure homes are maintained physically and financially. Increasing property taxes pose a particular risk for seniors on reduced retirement or fixed income. They may be eligible for senior tax exemptions and enhanced STAR, but there are procedural hurdles that make it very difficult for the most vulnerable seniors to access those entitlements from the Department of Finance. Many seniors also don't know who to trust and are bombarded by predatory investors and other scammers. There is an active underbelly of real estate practitioners who sole job is to divest homeowners from the accumulated equity in their homes through artful tactics. The need for high-quality free legal services is huge, and the City Bar Justice Center can only meet a small percentage of that need. We belong to a network of service providers, I'll cut to the chase. We absolutely need the full $20 million of funding for legal services, $12 million isn't gonna cut it, that's just to maintain our existing level of services. We absolutely need property tax reform and tax equity. It's insane that de Blasio's $2 million park slope brownstone is taxed at the same level as some of these properties in East New York that are worth far less, and especially when you compare it to all these new developments, the condos, that sort of thing. So absolutely tax reform. And we need a hearing to hold banks and financial institutions accountable, much like this hearing, except we need to hold them to the fire and understand why they aren't doing what they should be doing and are required to do to preserve homeownership in vulnerable communities, and bring in the Department of Financial Services and have them explain why they aren't holding the banks and financial institutions accountable. Thank you.
And our last speaker, Dr. Flatto, Professor Dr. Flatto, from the DuBois-Bunch Center for Public Policy.
Good afternoon, our distinguished leaders and brothers and sisters. 180 seconds. The crisis of black property ownership. That's what we're talking about. Yes, we all, I'm a Bed-Stuy homeowner, so we all have our individual issues we're dealing with, but we need to take a collective view. One of the reasons we're under assault is because of the wealth that we do have. There are a million homeowners in New York City. Let me, let me bring you greetings on behalf of mega reveres college, DuBois-Bunch Center for Public Policy, and the U.S. Census Information Center. So we've been studying this, this issue, and just using census data on owner-occupied, owner-occupied homeowners. There are a million homeowners in New York City, half a million are white, 20%, 200,000 black homeowners in New York City. Brooklyn is the epicenter of the black homeowners population in the city, followed closely by Queens. Central Brooklyn and Southeast Queens are three-quarters of all black homeowners in New York City. Just three congressional districts, Clark and Jeffries in Brooklyn, and Meeks in Southeast Queens. This is the epicenter of black homeownership. We also have a very large segment of homeowners in North Central Bronx. We should also, though, think about faith institutions. They are close on our heels, and they are very closely connected to this crisis. We've studied just in central, a part of Central Brooklyn, about 10 zip codes, there are over 600 churches. That's land and buildings also that is under, I'm trying to be polite, assault. The same way that we individual homeowners are. And when we lose our homes, we lose residents, we lose tenants, our churches are losing congregants, parishioners, and a revenue base. And they are also getting notifications about building code violations. If you don't file those tax exemption letters every year, you're finding out by surprise you now owe taxes on land that your congregation owns. So it's not just we homeowners, yes, there's 200,000 of us strong in New York City, we need to stay strong. There's 80,000 of us right here in Central Brooklyn. I've got eight seconds, so I'm gonna move right to the recommendations. I've got eight seconds, so I'm going to move right to the recommendations. Oh, that's a warning, so...
That's it.
That's it. Golly! Wrap up, Doc. Wrap up.
There's always one.
Okay, well, on the last page, there's an eight-point program. We need to define something called gentrification zones, because we know where the problem is. One of our great friends, the New Economy Project, just put out a report. They did a master list of 10 neighborhoods in the entire state. Canarsie, 11234, and 11236 are on the top 10 list of the 10 hardest-hit zip codes in the entire state. That's just down the street from where we are here. We need to define the problem. Foreclosure moratorium, more mandatory data reporting. The reason I'm able to give you these numbers is I'm working from the Census Bureau. But there's all kinds of data... That was my brother, by the way, Richard Flato, in case you were running... Oh, is my brother. I'm his baby brother. But data... Some of y'all caught that joke, right? Data reporting is extremely important. Somebody mentioned the courts. We need to start tracking this information. How many are coming down here on Thursday at surrogate court across the street? What zip codes are they in? What are those addresses? So we can pin down the problem, all right? Mandatory data reporting, and we know that the caucus is moving on that issue. Creation of community-controlled land trusts. Not handing off... If in fact we are in distress, not handing it off to commercial developers, and even unfortunately, some of our own nonprofits have gotten caught up in this mix with the TPT problem. So there's another kind of vehicle called a land trust, new types of vehicles that can be created. Capitalization. We need new lending vehicles. I wasn't going to get fancy. Maybe it's on old, maybe it's credit unions, but we need some new type of financing vehicles that will give a distressed homeowner the opportunity to get a loan and stay in their home and not be shredded by subprime mortgages. I'll stop there at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. I appreciate that. We were just conferencing who we should talk to about the lending sources.
Yes, as a matter of fact, just for the sake of understanding how hurt I am that we didn't have more time for Dr. Flato, we could spend a whole day with him, because he really understands what we need to be doing, how we need to think, and he has the information to help guide our thinking. So, Dr. Flato, we're going to work with you on a day. It's a Flato Day, so he can educate us and give us direction. I want to... Yes, go ahead.
Can I acknowledge the other testimonies? Oh, yes, I just want to acknowledge... So I know a number of you... I just want you all to see that we are all leaving with your testimonies, that those of you who submitted written testimony and did not have an opportunity to stand up and speak, we have the copies of it here. It will become a part of the record, and more importantly, we will be reviewing it as part of this work that we're doing to go forward and move forward with this work. So I just wanted to say thank you first for taking the time to do it, and also to let you know that it is not falling upon deaf ears.
And we don't have time for audience questions, but I hope that everybody signed in, because we will be getting back to you on what our response is. That's number one. Number two, my staff has asked if I would announce that we have downstairs tables with information and resources there for someone who can help answer your questions if you have issues immediately. So we don't want you to miss that opportunity. And before I ask Senator Kavanaugh to speak, I want to just thank staff. We have all been in Albany for the last two weeks straight, working on the budget, because without that, nothing happens. And we, you know, I heard several references to the $20 million. We have to be there to make sure that's there. That's an everyday thing, talking to each other, talking to the leadership, making sure that the money is there. So it's not there yet, but we're working on it, we want you to know that. So I want to thank... Where is Kathleen? Where is Kathleen? Kathleen has been so spectacularly supportive from the Borough President's staff. Anthony Drummond, where is Anthony? Is he here anyplace? Okay, I'm thanking them, because they're the ones who really put this together. It wasn't us, and I want to thank them. Ryan Lynch and David Johnson. So I'm thanking them for their work. And from Assemblywoman's staff, Ta'Kwan Coleman, where is Ta'Kwan? Is he around here? He's not here. And Shante Edwards. Shante, thank you. And for my wonderful staff, I must give my staff a little bit more, all right? So I want to start with my chief of staff. Where is she? Susan Lung. And thank you, Susan, for everything that you do. Shakti, where is Ms. Shakti? Oh, my wonderful young millennial who has put this together. Isn't this wonderful? You have young people that can run fast and think fast. And Stephanie, where is Stephanie? Stephanie Zinnerman, thank you, Stephanie, appreciate you, my love. And Raquel, and where's Raquel Sadler? And Fabian Smith, where's Fabian? He's out there. They came down from Albany to help us out. So this is the kind of staff, it takes all of us working together to make this happen, and I really appreciate them. We stand on their shoulders. All of us stand on the shoulders of our staff, so we thank them. Could I just say, before we all leave, I wanted the Borough President to close us out, but we have tried to restrain ourselves from talking... Not me, I'm sorry. Talking too much, because we didn't want to take up any of your time. So this is our time to just sort of wrap up and say what we think we've heard, where we go with this. And I'm going to... Certainly, I want it to be led off by the Chair of the Housing Committee, Senator Kavanaugh, Brian Kavanaugh. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. You're going to have to... I'm sorry. You're going to have to take a seat, because it's not fair. And no, 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 no. This was a place for testimony, and you are not signed up to give testimony? So I'm going to ask you to please sit down and allow us to close this. And yes, you did, because the notice went out to everyone. It was widely circulated. If you haven't, I'm going to give you the opportunity to go fill out one of the forms, just like someone else who sent it up to me just now with their written testimony, so that we can include it in the record. But it is not fair at this moment. So I'm going to ask you to please sit and to allow them to close out. Thank you. So I'm going to ask you both... No, 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 we don't want to leave, we don't want to clear it, but we are asking you to please honor the fact that we were given permission to use this space until 5:00, and that is our responsibility.
We heard from lawyers, experts, nonprofits. You have not heard from homeowners.
Excuse me, yes. I'm sorry. We have heard from homeowners, and it is a mixture in the testimony, public speaking, the public speaking portion, and we also have the written testimony of lots of others. So I need you to just allow us to close out, and we can continue the conversation. This is not the end of this conversation. This is one moment in time, so that we can put this on the record and create a record. So I'm asking if you have not submitted your testimony, which I am under the understanding you have not, that you will please submit your testimony, so they can become part of the record. But this, at the moment, when we have 10 minutes to get this room cleared and to get everybody out, we can't open it up, we can't open the floor. So please, Senator Kavanaugh?
Thank you. And as Assemblymember Wright just said, this is the beginning of a conversation about these issues. Just one very significant thing that has happened recently politically is that, for the first time in many, many years, we have both the Senate and the Assembly in the hands of Democrats and in the hands of people leadership, significant leadership from New York City. So while Senators Parker and Senator Montgomery have been doing an extraordinary job representing these communities for many years, and newer senators like myself and Senator Jackson have also been working in our own spheres on this, we have an opportunity to have very different conversations about what Albany can do to address the housing needs of people in New York City who are struggling with gentrification and displacement. We have begun this process by thinking of this holistically. We understand that displacement and gentrification, all of the issues kind of relate to each other. So renters face pressure, because the rent laws are weak. Public housing faces pressure, because there's not enough investment, and certainly homeowners face pressure because of a lot of the issues we've heard today. Tax foreclosure rules that are lax and foreclosure, and other kinds of foreclosure where people need services. Both the Assembly and the Senate did pass resolutions saying that that $20 million of Community First money needs to be in this budget. That budget is due in two weeks and two days, and we are committed to making sure that happens, that had been fully cut in the executive budget. We will be having hearings on lots of these issues, formal hearings of the Senate, and we'll be having conversations about how to address these issues. I am very thankful to Borough President Adams and Senator Montgomery and Assemblymember Wright for putting this together. And my great colleagues, Assemblymember Perry and Assemblymember Taylor as well, for all the work they do. So thank you all for listening, and thank you all for the wonderful testimony we've heard today.
Assemblyman Nick Perry has also joined us, and we want to allow him to respond. I think everybody else, and Senator Jackson, has also joined us. We'd like to hear his response.
Thank you, Senator. And let me just thank the constituents, homeowners, whatever your interest as a participant in this hearing. I just want to... I thank my colleagues who worked hard to put this together, and I appreciate having the opportunity to come and hear from you. Senator Montgomery and my colleagues and Assemblywoman Wright, who represents the areas that are reported to be mostly under attack by these unjust practices enabled by laws that were initially not intended to provide for these transgressions against homeowners. I've come to a tension in a way that is frightening, and so we will be doing what we can, working to develop a remedy to put an end to the abuse of the law, and for those who have been victims, some reparations or return of their property to them, because that's the only justice that can come from this. And one of the speakers here talked about gentrification. That's phenomena that's causing a lot of things to happen with property, when your... The little lot you own or house you own suddenly becomes worth a lot more than you ever imagined, and other people want to prey on your age or your economic situation to take your property from you. I think we need to, as legislators, come up with a definition for this word or this phenomenon, and create a program that will provide help to homeowners, especially elder New Yorkers, who need help to keep their property, to keep their home, and to be able to live the last years of their lives with dignity, economic and otherwise, because property allows you some economic dignity, especially when the price of the property has soared well beyond your imagination. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Senator Jackson, you got a couple of words for us?
Well, first, let me thank all of you for putting this together, and I'm sorry I was at an Education Committee hearing, as you know earlier.
We forgive you. You can pay your congestion pricing as you leave the building.
But what I like to say is that I'm so happy to see so many people here this afternoon in order to listen and to ascertain information and give information. The more we talk about this matter, the more that we learn about it, the more helpful we will be for one another. My daughter lives in an HDFC co-op in West Harlem, and I say to you that, you know, making sure that everyone involved in any type of homeownership, whether it's a private home or an HDFC co-op, everyone needs to know the rules and regulations. If you don't know, you will be used in the process, used externally or internally. And the bottom line is that you must be able to hold all of your officers accountable, all of them. And I give you this example. When I was a member of the City Council, I used to go to meetings of some HDFCs in West Harlem. And let me be quite frank, I used to tell them, "I feel like kicking you in your butt." And I told them, because I'm talking to you like a brother, you know, you're going to lose your home, the majority of them, and you'll never be able to afford it again. And that's real. And you got to talk to your brothers and sisters with reality, a reality check. So we have to come together, and there's a group in northern Manhattan for the Community Land Trust, where we talk about everyone, let's put our money together. So if you have $1,000 that you can invest in a land use trust, and you know that it's going to be invested correctly, and when you need it, hopefully you'll get it back, even if you have $500, $25. You know how many people... Dr. Flato, you said how many? 200,000 what? Hello? If they did $10 each, how much is that? Hello? That's what we're talking about. We need grabbing our power and putting together. And so I ask you, if that has not been done, then, doctor, you have to get it done legally, so people can invest $10 a month, $20 a month, or if they can get $5,000 in their savings account to help someone else save their home. That's what we have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say this to the people who are disappointed. We're disappointed as well. But let me just say one thing to you that I think is extremely important, and I see the gentleman here very, very upset. A lot of people are upset. But we did not plan this to be a town hall meeting. A town hall meeting, you can talk on and on, it can go on into the night, and I've been to those, we've had a lot of those. And we're very, very emotional. So when we start telling our story, we get very upset, and we get wound up, and we want to talk more and more. And that's okay. We do have opportunities to do that in a format that is less formal. But we intended... The members here, for the first time, we're chairs of committee. We have not had the Chair of the Housing Committee in the New York State Senate be able to come here. This is very different, y'all. And I'm Chair of the Children and Families. I know that doesn't ring any bell with you, but I'm the senior member of the Senate group, the Democrats. So they, you know, they respect me a lot. I appreciate that. But we have the Chair of Environmental and Telecommunications Committee. That's a different thing. So I wanted them, and they agreed to come, at my request and behest and the Borough President's behest, because we wanted to have an official hearing. We can use this to move legislation. So we're not just talking trash anymore. So we're not just talking trash anymore. We're talking about what needs to be done. And we are now in a position to finally do it. We intend to make that happen. Senator Robert Jackson is a chair now. So we're not, you're not just talking to each other. We are now talking about moving legislation, fixing the situation. So don't let us off the hook by going on and on and on, talking and talking and talking. We, that's why we said, "Give us your recommendations." And I want to thank, I want to thank the Borough President for that. Because, yes, he, he put his foot down, he made that clear to us. We were not having, he's not hosting a town meeting, he's hosting a hearing. He wanted it officially in the Borough President's place, hearing room. This is our, this is the official city agency for us in the Brooklyn of New York, and he is the head of it. So now we have more information. We will be reaching back out to you. And for certain, this did not go on deaf ears. We are now in a very different position, and we thank you. Let me ask if our Borough President, please be respectful and remain seated. Let him dismiss us, and let's be respectful to the leader of our borough, Borough President Eric Adams.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Senator, Senator Montgomery. And I think the analysis that the Senator just gave us, for over 75 years minus two, we did not have any real authority in the State Senate. And we should really understand what that means to have these senators here who are chairs of committee, chairs of committee. That's a, that is a game changer for us. It's a game changer. And, and to have Senator Montgomery from Brooklyn, that is the senior member in the upper house. So we need to really understand what this means for us. Her direct voice to the Speaker, to the leader of the Senate, direct voice to the leader of the Senate. Kevin Parker is the whip. He, he brings, he brings all the senators together. So the power is in the downstate area for the first time in over 70-plus years. This is our opportunity to get a lot of legislation done, to go after these major issues. Chairs of the Banking Committee, chairs of the Health Committee, chairs of the Human Services Committee, chairs, chairs of the Energy Committee. All of these finance committees in New York. So some of this, sometimes, some of this stuff just seems sort of vague. Trust me when I tell you, the power is downstate. Historically, you only had two downstate senators, Senator Golden and Senator Lanza. Two Republicans. Now, it's downstate power, and we can do some real things with that power because they understand it. First time in 70 years, the power is in the hands of the people, and now the people are going to do what they need to do with the power. Thank you for coming up. Have a good evening.